So it won't do it.
Okay, it looks like you're set up to zoom and still be able to see the agenda. So it looks like you have multiple devices supporting you. So that's good news.
I'm good. Trusty little phone.
We're all working our way back into all virtual world, I guess. Okay, with that, everyone, it looks like it's seven o'clock. So I would like to call to order the regular meeting for Monday, September 20th, 2021 of the Ferguson Township Board of Supervisors. I think we'll say the pledge and then we'll ask Dave to let us know once again all about participation virtually. So Dave, if you would like to perhaps get the flag photo up, if you've got it handy from before, I'm not sure. Fantastic. Thank you so much. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God.
Liberty and justice.
Justice for all. Thank you much. All right, Dave, if you wanted to us all know the details on participation in our virtual meeting.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, and thanks to the members of the board and the public and staff for joining us this evening. This is the September 20th regular meeting of the Ferguson Township Board of Supervisors. Meeting has been advertised as required by the Pennsylvania Sunshine Act as a virtual meeting conducted using our Zoom telemeeting platform. If you're joining the Zoom meeting tonight as a member of the public or as an agent to speak on behalf of an agenda item, I just ask that you answer your name, if applicable, the municipality of residence and topic you wish to speak on by using the chat feature beneath the word bubble at the bottom of your screen. This will help ensure that the minutes accurately reflect those in attendance. Prior to commencing the meeting, just a few procedural items that I'll cover. Firstly, this has been structured as a meeting format, so really just kind of on the honor system, if those in attendance can mute themselves unless speaking or addressed by the chair, if you are addressed by the chair, you can unmute yourself, speak and then re-mute when you're done with your comments or question. Any further instruction needed, I can provide as we move through this. Secondly, board members are asked to provide their names when motioning or seconding a motion so that the minutes can accurately reflect any action taken. And then finally, I'll take a roll call, the Board of Supervisors, to ensure that you all can hear and interact using the Zoom meeting platform. Please just indicate you're here when your name is called. Mr. Ninni?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Ms. Steckler?
Here.
Ms. Stevens?
Here.
Ms. Strickland?
Here.
Madam Chair, we have a quorum. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dave. And let's move into citizens input for items that are not on the agenda. If you would state your name and municipality of residence, and please limit your comments to five minutes. I am not seeing anyone. Dave, are you? Oh, okay, Rhonda Stern. Yes, please. Thank you. You're muted. I'm sorry, Rhonda. Thank you.
Mute. Okay.
You got it.
Can you hear me now? Okay, I'm Rhonda Stern. I live in Ferguson Township. Um, so I, I know that this isn't a meeting to discuss what's going to replace the T S D district necessarily, but I just wanted to bring something up that might be a pre-pre-planning. I really think that we need a vision for our neighborhood, and that can include all of Ferguson Township, just the people in the district. And I think that that vision would be best brought forth from people that live here as a first step. I know we need, you'll need to get, you know, developer in and all that. But I think I'd like to suggest that there be some kind of a a questionnaire that might go out to the people, especially people in our neighborhood about how people could envision the neighborhood developing. It, it, it can be so many different things. It can end up with 12-story high rises as soon as you get past Pine Grove Mills or something, or it could be kind of a, a west end cool place with arts and and buildings that are, you know, three, four stories high, kind of like a European village kind of thing almost, or a Pittsburgh South Side. I like the idea of it being kind of a transition place from the rural part of Ferguson Township to the city of State College, rather than boom, boom, it's rural, now it's, now it's developed as much as possible to get as much tax income and, and whatever. I think, I think it can still be a very profitable place without being totally full of 12-story buildings and, and keeping a sense of a neighborhood here, which we do have now. Um, it could even be kind of an arts west side place, I said. So that's number one. I hope that gives you thought for, um, you know, food for thought, as they say. Um, the second one is just again about as things develop, the danger of parking, the danger for cars on our street. And, and I would like to know who to talk to or who I could bring in to actually walk around the streets around the new development by the O W House, of old O W House building, the development that's happening around there can be very dangerous for the, for traffic. And so I'd love to know, like, who would I talk to that could actually come out, look at a one particular situation, but I'm sure there's others to discuss safety and parking. So I don't know if anybody can give me a connection or person to talk to about that. So the two things, a survey is one, one thought, and then someone to talk to about the parking situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Rhonda. While you were talking about the survey idea for the west, west end there, it really was getting me thinking about the Pine Grove Mills small area plan and how valuable that visioning plan was for that area. And although I don't know that we would embark on that prior to the T S D effort, but certainly taking elements of that, like things that you've identified and integrating that into our process, I think is a really good idea. And thank you for that food on thought, food for thought. In terms of going out and walking around the neighborhood, we've, board members have done that in the past. Recently, actually, two board members went out when there was a crossing at a school kind of a situation. So I would be more than willing to come out and perhaps another board member. And then if Dave, I don't know, if you wanted to comment on either of those things, you're more than welcome to, but also we don't always, we don't always respond to citizen input, but you inspired me to just, you know, let you know those things. I wanted to give Dave an opportunity if he wanted to add anything into that.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate that. I would just suggest you get in touch with me. Depending on what you're looking for, what your concerns are, that may help give me some direction as to who the right person for contact would be in the office. So if you want to send me an email or give me a call, then Rhonda, you can do either and my email's working again, so I should get that. Thank you.
Thank you. And I do think that getting citizen input for the vision would help avoid some of what happened last time when there was some conflicts and, I mean, not avoid it totally. There's no way to avoid it totally, but I think when you get people on board more, you're going to have a, a more peaceful and profitable development.
Absolutely. Thank you so much, Rhonda. Thank you so much. Would anyone else care to comment? All right, seeing none. Let's go ahead and move on to the approval of the minutes. I would like to entertain a motion, please, to approve the September 7th, 2021 regular meeting minutes and the August 31st, 2021 War Two vacancy. Uh, um, actually, I'll just entertain, entertain a motion for the regular meeting minutes first.
I'm over to approve the September 7th, 2021 Board of Supervisors regular meeting minutes.
Thank you. And do I have a second?
This is Patty. I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Same sign? Thank you. And now I'd like to enter, entertain a motion to approve the August 31st, 2021 Wired Two vacancy special meeting minutes, please.
I'll make a motion that we approve the August 31st, 2021 War Two vacancy special meeting minutes.
Do I have a second?
This is Patty. I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign? And Dave, I wasn't actually sure on the procedure on that. For the War Two vacancy, could, could the full board vote on that, or would that have been just four members of the board voting on that?
Yeah, so typically, you're right. Typically, Ms. Steckler would abstain since she wasn't on the board.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Thanks.
That's okay. I'll, I'll record it as four zero.
Fantastic. Thank you much. Thank you much. Okay, next, let's move on to special reports. We have with us John Spahalsky from the Center Area Transportation Authority, or CADA, for his report. Welcome, John.
Thank you very much. And good evening, members of the board and staff. As I was alluding to in our informal conversation prior to the start of this evening's board meeting, CADA is experiencing unprecedented staffing shortages, including in particular, but not exclusively, in the ranks of bus operators. Now, obviously, we can't operate buses without bus operators. And so a triage action was needed by implementation of several temporary service changes that would reallocate the available staff resources from low ridership routes and times of day to high ridership routes with midday demand that we have not yet been able to meet. As I would explain that last part of it, there are some routes in which ridership has rebounded very strongly to the point where the initial amount of capacity committed to those routes was not sufficient to meet all of the demand. And certainly, it's not desirable to leave passengers standing to stop with a bus departing full. And so that was another part of this challenge that set in motion this, what I call a triage action. And so with that, to become specific about the adjustments, the services that have been subjected to at least temporary suspension include the F route, the G route, and the S routes, and weekday service on the K route with a termination of service on that route at around 7:00 PM in the evening. So in other words, there'll be about three trips later than seven that will not be operated. But during the day, the service on the K will remain as it is now. There'll be some additional service changes that will go into effect two weeks from today on Monday, October 4th. With the P route, that's Bolzberg Service ending at approximately 7:00 PM. Again, as with the K, some of the later trips that are not as heavily patronized will be suspended at least temporarily. Monday through Saturday is the service on that route. And also, service on the N, R, V, W, and H M routes will drop to hourly service after 7:00 PM, Monday through Saturday, instead of the present 40-minute frequency. The adjusted timetables reflecting these changes are available at www.catabus.com, of course, the CADA website. Now, I do want to emphasize that CADA GO and CADA Ride services are not affected. So if a person who needs CADA Ride service is wondering about these changes, they should be assured that the CADA Ride service will still be available. And also where it is operated at the moment, CADA GO. And certainly, any person who is impacted by these changes is strongly encouraged to contact CADA's Customer Service Center. That's eight one four two three eight CADA, or that is 2282, to discuss any transportation needs and possible alternatives that would be strongly impacted by any of the changes that have just been mentioned. And I do want to emphasize that these changes are intended to be temporary while CADA continues to work on bus operator recruitment. CADA is trying to hire as many as 20 new operators and paid training is provided. So I'll put in a little bit of a plea here. Anyone interested in possibly having experience as a bus operator can apply online at catabus.com/careers. There's also another reminder, because as we all know, given the fact that this evening's board meeting reflects the concerns about COVID and its pesky continuing presence. The federal TSA mask mandate remains in effect through January 18th, 2022 now for all persons using public transportation, including urban transportation such as on CADA and every other mode of public passenger transport, surface and air and water. And this includes for CADA, all riders on all CADA vehicles and public transit queuing areas. In other words, it's not just on the bus, it's queuing up to board a bus at a bus stop. And masks, masks are also required if, by, for anyone visiting CADA's Downtown Customer Service Center in accordance with the State College Borough's Temporary Emergency Masking Ordinance. Another subject, not, I'll briefly mention, in the midst of all of the current demands on CADA staff time with staff shortage and a variety of other tasks that are of immediate and critical importance, CADA is going to be seeking a public or performing CADA outreach for what we call a system reimagine study, and that will have an outreach effort taking place during the week of October 4th through 8th. During that week, CADA is going to have some consultants writing all of CADA's services to talk with passengers. And then a public forum is planned that will be used, of course, to gather additional public and public and passenger and public input. And details will be publicized on the CADA website, so and on social media and other local media outlets. So I do want you to be aware of that. This reimagine study, of course, is, I would put it in the category of what some people would call related to strategic planning and trying to chart a course for how to better CADA's service to the public as we go forward in time. With that, I will hold for any questions. And of course, Luana Oliva, our executive director and chief executive officer is with us this evening. And she can certainly provide additional information on any questions that you might have. So with that, I stand for questions, and so does Luana.
Thank you, John. Patty?
Hi, thank you. Thank you for your report. I have a question about, on the routes themselves, the little holders that usually give you the timetables, there's nothing in, at least the one in my neighborhood, so not even, not even anything to scan. Are you planning on putting those in that tell you which route it is in the timetables?
Well, there was a change on that that occurred a little about a year ago or a little more now since as time goes on. I'll defer to Luana to explain why you don't see what you thought you might still see that was once there.
Hopefully you'll be able to hear me because my, my internet bandwidth, I keep getting the warnings here, so. What we have been moving to and what we'll have to figure out, if I can get with you and find out exactly where you're talking about, we tried to go through with everything that's been going on with COVID and how the impacts on all the service. We moved away from having the actual times in there because then if things changed, we have over 800 stops in the system. But there are supposed to be in there that sort of gives you different links that you could go to to get the information for that particular stop, including being able to text to the stop, like text the stop number and get like when the next bus would come.
Right.
So I'm guessing that we missed a few in the, over the process of COVID, so I would love to talk to you or if you could maybe send me an email and let me know where that is so we can get out and get them.
Sure, sure. Mine is the A route in Overlook Heights, so I haven't gone on all of it, but just in the Overlook Heights area, the A route doesn't have it.
Um, if I could offer a minute, I am often an A route user, and fortunately, that one, that route has not been impacted by this triage of service suspension.
Yeah.
But what I did was go to the CADA website and I pulled down the timetable for the A route. And of course, it could, you could also access it electronically on the app or on, on the CADA app for schedules. But I also like to have as a backup a paper copy in my pocket. And so I downloaded a printed copy of it. As a matter of fact, it's right here. So that's one other way that one might approach this and get an idea of just about when a bus would arrive at their stop. I would echo what Luana just said. With all of the number of stops, it's been difficult to try to get to everyone to put in a sheet of information that would denote the various sources in which one could still obtain information. And of course, much of this now would rely on our handheld electronic technology. But, but, but I, I too appreciate the question and, and I'll defer to what Luana just recommended for more specific information for the particular stops that you're concerned about in Overlook Heights. And I get a view of Overlook Heights every time I go through there on an A inbound or outbound, so. But thank you for the question. It's a very relevant question.
Thanks, John. Thanks, Luana. Other questions? Lisa?
Hi, and thanks very much for the report. I just have a few questions. I'm wondering if you could talk to us a little bit more about the staffing shortages. So you know, what were the, maybe the number of drivers pre-pandemic? How many you've lost? Are these just people not returning as you've increased services? And you know, we obviously understand that every industry is being impacted by struggles to get employees in place. Do you have any indication of why you're having troubles with this? So any more detail you can give us on, on the staffing shortages right now?
Well, Luana is living this, and so I will ask her what she is suggesting.
So yes, we, so if you remember, we, there were points during the pandemic where we had up to 65% of our staff laid off because of the the changes that happened because of the pandemic. So when it, when we finally landed on what the service was going to be for the fall, we did, we did callbacks and we were expecting about 109 employees to come back. Or I shouldn't say employees, but about bus operators. Over time, either between folks who just did not show back up afterwards, or we've had some retirements, we've had a level of retirements that had been expected. And some other people that have just found other employment, and then some folks that are out for an unpredicted amount of time, either because of FMLA or an illness. So we're down to, right now, we have about 89 operators that are effectively able to come in and work. That all happened over a six-week period. So we've been going into the service that we felt like it might be tight, but what we didn't do is what happened last year, which is we brought everybody back and put all the service back, and then it actually didn't. A lot of folks were still doing virtual, either virtual classes, virtual and then we had to lay people back off. And so what we wanted to avoid, in this particular case, it wouldn't have been getting people back to work and then laying them off. We were more concerned about hiring somebody, them leaving a job they have, coming to work for us and not not materializing, that classes wouldn't be quite as in-person as, as we were hearing they might be, and then having to then lay people off. They've left, left a job to come join our team. So that's, that's really about the level of feedback that I have right now. I was at a meeting this, this last week. One of, one of the numbers they put out, I guess it came from SHRM, the Human Resources Professional Association, is that for every person of working age right now, there's 1.4 job openings. So there's more openings out there right now than there are people to fill it. So it's, everybody's experiencing this. We're hearing it a lot from some restaurants around town and those kind of things that they're sort of cutting back their hours and stuff because they don't have enough people to fill. This is similar. I, I've, I've sort of said it's, it's almost like a rolling block trying to avoid what we don't want people to be standing at a bus stop and then find out the bus isn't coming. We'd like to try to get at this, you know, unfortunately, everybody's trip is important, but we'd rather be planned and people can sort of make, be aware of when it's going to happen.
Mm-hmm. Thanks so much. That really helps. Helps me understand, you know, what, what led up to this. I really appreciate all that information. I wanted to just ask about the reimagining process you're going to go through. And if you could just give us, you know, not right now, but maybe by email to one of us, some type of information on how there can be public input during this time, at least one of our routes. The F route will be over with by then. So you probably said what other public input opportunities there are, but if we could get something that we can share for those residents who won't be riding the bus October 4th through 8th from Pine Grove Mills particularly. And the last thing I wanted to ask is, we had mentioned before our interest in getting a CADA GO opportunity in Ferguson, particularly in that area and Pine Grove Mills and further out west where we're losing service. So and last time we spoke, we were going to just keep checking on how the CADA experiment was moving along and, you know, if there'd be some potential for expanding it. So if we could hear about that next time and how, how the those areas that have it are.
Thanks, Lisa. Good thoughts.
Okay, yes, thank you very much. Luana, do you have any comments?
I, I think she request, I'd like to either set up for the future or have a sense of information on the reimagine study. I'm very, very close. We got the flyers and everything today for approvals, so we should be having some stuff ready to go out for publicity very soon on the public input for that particular.
Okay. And then on the CADA GO, that would be information for a subsequent meeting, if I understood the, the request. Very good. Are there any other questions that anyone would wish to offer?
I have no questions, but I wanted to make a comment. Thank you both for your report and Luana for, you know, being on the front lines there and working. And working through this very, very difficult time with the CADA with CADA service and COVID. So thank you both very much and thank you for your time.
And thank you for your understanding and for allowing us to share our information this evening.
Thanks, John. All right. Next up, Dave Pabaka Township Manager with more on COVID. We're reinitiating our. COVID reports. And so, Dave, you're up. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you and good evening. I'll keep my comments fairly brief. As Mr. Denny pointed out, given that we're in an area of high COVID transmission and we've. Kind of reverted back to our Zoom meetings. It's been requested that I begin providing. Board and the public with some updates on our local and regional response effort to the pandemic. First, Center County data continues to show, of course, alarming numbers with seventeen thousand twenty eight confirmed COVID nineteen cases and two hundred and thirty three deaths. There are seventy eight thousand one hundred and fifty four reported negative cases on the Pennsylvania COVID nineteen dashboard for Center County. Across the Commonwealth, the number of reported positive cases has reached one million one hundred forty eight thousand seven hundred and seventy five with twenty eight thousand. Eight hundred and sixty four deaths. Second, on vaccinations, Center County data shows that eighty two thousand nineteen residents have been fully vaccinated. And another six thousand five hundred and twenty four have been partially covered. That puts the county's vaccination vaccination rate at fifty two point five percent. With being full vaccinated and sixty one point one having received at least one dose. Sixty one point one percent. Over six point one million Pennsylvanians are reported to have been fully vaccinated as of today. Next, as of September seventeenth, Mountain Medical Center had forty two COVID positive inpatients in their care, ranging in age from nineteen to ninety two. Hospital administrators report being fairly alarmed at the increase in hospitalizations due to COVID nineteen, noting that their average daily census. Of COVID positive patients has nearly doubled in two weeks. The vast majority of hospitalized patients are unvaccinated. In August, the hospital employed measures to free up space to treat COVID positive patients, including canceling or rescheduling elective surgeries. Or procedures that require overnight stays and re-implementing their no visitor policy from earlier in the pandemic. Hospital administration notes that additional measures may need to be employed as conditions worsen. There are four main variants of concern currently in the United States. And all Ferguson Township residents are encouraged to sign up and receive the COVID nineteen vaccination if they're eligible and have not already done so. Lastly, on township facilities, they remain open to the public during normal business hours. We do have some staff that are working. Partly remote, partial in office assignments until further notice so that we can optimally social distance. So appointments for any meetings with staff are strongly encouraged. All meetings except where necessary to be done on site will be done virtually. By Zoom. Staff in the public are required to be masked at all times in any township facility, regardless of vaccination status. We do have disposable masks available in the lobby. That concludes my report. I'll be happy to answer any questions and thanks. For all your patience and understanding as we continue to recover from this crisis.
Thank you so very much, Dave. Do any board members have questions? Just have one comment just to reemphasize to please get vaccinated. It's very important to keep folks out of the hospital and keep the hospital functioning to be able to serve the community. So just really. Time to chip in and do every everybody do their part. With that, moving on to unfinished business. First up, we have a conditional use permit application at thirteen fifty Greenwood Circle. And this will be introduced by Ms. Jenna Worgo, Director of Planning and Zoning. Jenna?
Actually, Jenna's not here this evening. We do have Christina Bassett, who's our community planner. You may have known her as Christina Aniston. She got married.
Congratulations and welcome, Christina. Thanks.
Christina, did you want to introduce this? I didn't get a chance. Oh, we may have lost her. Oh, no, there she is. Okay.
Switched from my phone to my laptop, so it was dying. Yes, thank you, Dave. I can introduce this. Jenna asked me to step in while she is celebrating her birthday today. We received an application for conditional use permit for property located at thirteen fifty Greenwood Circle to subdivide a flight. Subdivide a lot that would produce a flag lot that has been filed by SAS Geospatial on behalf of their the properties owners. Property owners, Jessica Gracie Griffin and Corey Griffin. The applicant is requesting to subdivide the law and create a flag law for proposed new home. The township's zoning ordinance and the municipal planning code, the MPC, requires a public hearing on the application to form a flag law. The board must take action to approve or deny the application within forty five days following the hearing. The board held the public hearing on September seventh, twenty twenty one, and received a testimony from township staff. The township manager prepared a draft decision based on the on the record from the September seventh public hearing. The draft is provided with the agenda. No additional testimony will be taken at tonight's meeting. The board is asked to review and discuss the draft decision. And take final action to approve or deny the conditional use permit. The recommended motion here would be that the board supervisors approve the conditional use permit application for thirteen fifty Greenwood Circle, subject to the conditions described. In the township manager's written decision dated September twentieth, twenty twenty one.
Thank you, Christina. As Christina indicated, there is a motion available on our agenda. I'd love to entertain that at this point.
This is Lisa. I'll move that the Board of Supervisors approve the conditional use permit application for thirteen fifty Greenwood Circle. Subject to the conditions described in the Township Manager's Written Decision dated September twentieth, twenty twenty one.
This is Patty. I'll second. Thank you, Lisa and Patty. Do we have any comments from the board? Okay, if there's nothing further, I'd like to call for a vote. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Same sign. Motion passes five to zero. Okay, next up. Is the award of contract twenty twenty one dash C eighteen Homestead Park play equipment. I believe this will be introduced by Centrice Martin. Centuries.
Hello, good evening. Provided with the agenda is a copy of the estimate to construct the new play equipment on over at Homestead Park. As according to the master plan, there were several alternative designs reviewed by the Parks and Recreation Committee. And the piece of equipment proposed is consistent with the committee's recommendation. The cost estimate for this equipment to be purchased is thirty five thousand five hundred and fifteen dollars and the remainder of. Cost would be available for installation awarded as a separate engagement. And provided with the. With the agenda item is also the recommended motion that the Board of Supervisors award a contract for the purchase of Homestead Park play equipment.
Thank you so much, Centrice. As Centrice has indicated, there's a motion near agenda and I'd like to entertain that at this point.
Pam Steffler. I moved that the Board of Supervisors award contract twenty twenty one dash C eighteen Homestead Park play equipment to. George Eli Associates, Inc., in an amount of thirty five thousand five hundred and fifteen dollars.
This is Patty. I'll second. Thank you. Is will there be any comments? Questions? Okay, it looks like a nice piece of play equipment. Excited about that. Okay, let's please take a vote. All in favor, please say aye. 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 Any opposed? Same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next up, we'll move into new business. First on that, under that is the consent agenda. I'd like to take a motion to approve, please. This is Patty. I move that we accept the consent agenda as listed in the agenda. Thank you. Do I have a second?
A second, Steve.
Thank you, Steve. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Next up, the authorization to engage Polity, Inc. to facilitate an update to the Ferguson Township Strategic Plan. Introduced by Dave Pabaka. Dave?
Thank you very much. And the agenda includes a copy of the proposal that was received from Polity, Inc. To facilitate an update to the Ferguson Township Strategic Plan. The board may recall that there's an appropriation in the twenty twenty one. Operating budget, although we understand that'll carry into the twenty twenty two calendar years. You can see in that engagement. There was a small screening committee that was convened to interview respondents that included myself, Centrice Martin, Assistant Manager. Supervisors Miller and Nini, as well as a representative in the Ferguson Township Police Department Sergeant Eric Albright. We had an opportunity to review the respondents and are recommending that the board award the engagement to Polity, Inc. Tonight, we have here with us the project manager and principal of the firm, Peter Milan. So I'll ask Mr. Milan to introduce. The proposal and talk about whatever he wants to tee us up here.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave. Sorry. Thanks, Peter.
My apologies. Thank you so much for the opportunity. Thanks for the invitation this evening. So I just have a brief presentation. It's gonna be quick. I don't want to keep anyone in case they want to watch Monday Night Football. So I will. Be brief and I'm gonna share my script. That's okay, Dave.
Yeah, I I haven't told him about how long our meetings usually go, so he he might still think we're gonna get out of. Yeah, go ahead, Peter. You should be able to share. You should.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Okay. So just real quickly, can everyone see my PowerPoint?
Yes.
Okay, so I am. So again, thank you to David and Centrice for allowing me to present this evening. Thank you to the Board of Supervisors for allowing me the the time to kind of explain our our process. And kind of just give you a highlight on how our engagement is going to go with everybody. So I do have a copy of your strategic strategic plan that was done in twenty seventeen and what I noticed were. Twenty six highlighted items that were discussed during the. The working session. And what I plan on doing along with my team is we want to kind of figure out what's not done. I think that's going to be one of our our main goals initially is to kind of interview. Dave and Centuries to kind of figure out where we're at with regards to the twenty seventeen plan. I mean, it was comprehensive. I mean, it was well written and we just kind of want to see with a couple of highlighters to see what what's what's done, what's not done. What's in progress. So we don't kind of revisit that in the next plan because I think we'll just be redundant. And we don't want to do that, given that, you know, we're on a short timeline to start and present you with a an updated plan. So. Some of our initial tasks over the next few months are hopefully tomorrow I will be speaking with Dave and Centuries to kind of. Get telephone numbers, email addresses, and really start to schedule meetings with everybody. Unfortunately, when we were doing this. COVID was not as rampant as it was now. So we maybe have to revisit our engagement by holding these. Meetings virtually. Unfortunately, I'm a more of an in person kind of guy when it comes to these meetings. I think you have better engagement. But given how the numbers are are not good, I think we'll be respectful of precautions that are set forth by CDC and your local entities. And kind of follow what the recommendations are. And once we have those meetings scheduled, whether in person or virtually. We're going to start to really compile and analyze the data. A lot of this is going to be really speaking with David's entries on getting financial data. And really local economic data to see where we're going to kind of gear the the plan to with regards to those findings. The next biggest portion of our engagement will be the survey questions. I've come up with a really decent amount so far. And one of the things that I wanted to kind of touch upon with regards to the survey is that we. Are going to create some pretty strict logic on how someone can respond to the survey. And obviously without, you know, asking for, you know, confidential information, we're going to ask them questions that are derived from public data. So we're not going to let somebody who thinks they live at one, two, three Main Street in Ferguson Township. Just responded to survey. We want to make sure the person who is going to respond is actually a resident or a business holder or business owner in in Ferguson Township. Because we don't want bad data because I think everyone's heard of garbage in, garbage out. We're going to try to really avoid that. From happening here. And I think with the logic that I'm I'm going to present, I think we'll be we'll be we'll be able to really filter out. Anybody who is not really. Living here per se. Okay. Then what we also want to do is we want to start having more meetings then. I think after we finalize who we're going to speak to, we're going to start talking to people. Again, back to my comment regarding COVID, my my engagement at the time when I presented, when I sent this to Dave. And centuries was that we were going to have two sessions at the the I think it's called a Penn State, right, Dave? Is that correct? The Penn Stater. Again, I I think all of, you know, I'll touch I'll touch base with David's entries. As the as the deadline comes up to it to see if if you guys are still interested in doing that, it wouldn't just be supervised. It would be stakeholders. And the list that I was going to engage is on my proposal. I can, I think everyone should have a copy of it in your in your packets. But I can touch base with either one of you after this, if any additional questions or concerns. Then we want to kind of reach out to everybody and let them know what we're doing. I think one of the biggest things that's going to help drive the success of the plan is that we are going to be very. Strict on communication and participation. You know, we want the people that we're talking to to engage us. We don't want to have emails left unanswered. Voicemails not returned. I mean, this is really going to require a lot of input from the public and, you know, based on the success of your first plan. I really don't see any challenges. So I'm really looking forward to kind of engaging people who are really going to be. Significant contributors to the input and how we're going to go with the next plan. After this, we're going to start formalizing some data requests after we've had some meetings to see if, you know, we've kind of gotten anything out of those meetings. One thing that I kind of see that's part of this would be some some public safety data. I think that would probably give everyone a picture as to, you know, how busy your departments are, you know, where the resources at. That's really going to be a major component of the plan. And again, the the first in person strategy session in October. Who knows? I mean, it's kind of up in the air in a TBD, but we're hoping to kind of come out and spend a day with the stakeholders at the Penn Stater. But again, given that we're in this. Crisis, we're not sure if we're going to be able to do that. And we'll figure something else out, obviously. We'll do like an in person virtual thing. A virtual meeting throughout a day or break up in two days, but we'll, as time goes on, we'll kind of formalize a better suggestion. Again, and then after that, we'll be able to collect and analyze more data because really this is going to basically. Be hinged on data. We're not going to give you any recommendations that are not provable or not substantiated by data. Then we have our second in person strategy session in November. I do have a Board of Supervisors retreat scheduled for December. Again, everything's contingent on COVID. And then if everything kind of goes according to plan, which I think given our our very. Conservative timeline, we should be able to get a draft done by January tenth. Obviously, I I I try to take as many things into consideration as I can when I plan these dates out. But as I'm driving up yesterday, I'm noticing that on three twenty two, it looks like it's going to be really fun coming through snow. So I kind of want to see if I can prevent myself from coming through some blizzards to to have this these meetings, the impressive meeting. So. But again, weather aside, COVID aside, we'd like to have a draft in your hands by January tenth. After some changes and some modifications and reviews with the administration, we'd like to have the final plan by the twenty eighth. And then our public presentation back to the Board of Supervisors is in March of twenty twenty two. So I kind of went through that pretty quickly. I'll open up the floor to any questions that the Board of Supervisors may have regarding this.
Thanks, Peter. Board members, questions, please? Comments? Comments? Pam?
Yes, um, I tried to get through that whole thing. It was pretty long. But I noticed something was blatantly missing to me. And that was things about our environment and about climate, green building practices, ecological health.
And Pam, are you talking about the proposal itself that was in the agenda or the, the previous strategic plan, just to clarify?
I'm, I'm, well, probably both. But about pretty much what I read in, uh, in our agenda.
Okay, gotcha.
I, I might have, there were a few things that related to that too, probably in the old strategic plan. But since this is the new one.
Yeah.
Sorry, I'm not sure which place to look at.
No, no, that's fine.
So the, I mean, I, I think environmental stuff and, and like I said, ecological health and, and the interconnected, long-term effects of, of what we do on human health and well-being and ecological integrity. And I just feel like there was a lot of attention being paid to data and not much mention of environment and, and kind of future in terms of climate and stuff like that. So.
Okay.
I just wanted to make sure something was in there regarding.
Well, if it's okay with you, um, I'm going to be, reach out to Dave tomorrow for contact information. And we can set up a meeting one-on-one if you'd like, when we can, I can address your concerns if that's okay.
No, that'd be great.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thanks, Peter. Thanks, Pam. Any other comments or questions?
Lisa? Um, I, I really was excited about the, um, the in-person gatherings to get, you know, public feedback. So understanding this might be challenging right now. Is there potential for doing them outside, like at Two Deck Park where we have, you know, is this, is that even an option so that we wouldn't totally miss out?
Um, I, I didn't know that was possible. I mean, I'm open to anything. I mean, I'd like to, I'll crack a joke though, if that's okay. I'm very sensitive to cold. So, I mean, if it's too cold, then I'm not going to deal with them. But I'm just joking though. Yeah, I mean, I think that's possible. I mean, it never came up in my conversations. But if there's something that you want to do that we can do outside, maybe we can kind of talk about it offline and give me some suggestions. And I can reach out to Davis and Trees after this then, after I mean that.
Thanks. I don't know how feasible it is, but it was just an idea and, um, you know, a, a hope to not miss that opportunity.
Sure. Sure. I mean, again, if it's, if it's, if the weather's permitted, I mean, is it out, is it covered? Is there like a, is there a roof or just more like outside? I'm not familiar with it, so I'm, I'm asking.
Yeah, there's a covered pavilion. Yeah, go ahead, Laura.
No, go ahead. Yeah, there's, there's pavilion space.
Okay.
Someplace we could have a bonfire.
Yeah, I was just thinking, it sounds like a great opportunity to have a fall festival with food trucks and get, really get people out and involved in the strategic plan. But I also have some experience in event planning and realize that that might be more of a dream than a reality.
I'm all for food trucks though, so.
It sounds, two-deck truck, food, food trucks.
I'm first in line. I'll be right there for you.
Yeah, so it was a great suggestion. And so if, if, if staff and the consultant think it's feasible, I think it sounds lovely.
Sure. Thank you, Lisa. I appreciate that.
Other comments or questions? Thank you so very much. Look forward to working with you. And like Pam was saying, expanding on that vision of Ferguson Township. I also think that our previous strategic plan was pretty good. And it's not like, I guess we're going to really reinvent ourselves from top to bottom or anything like that. But really look forward to focusing in on what we've accomplished and where we can go from here. So thank you so much.
Thank you for the opportunity. I really appreciate it. I'm looking forward to working with everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have the University Air, University Park Airport Air Service Expansion Request for Support. And this will be introduced by Township Manager Dave Pabalka.
Just a quick note, though, we didn't get a motion on the last agenda item.
Oh, oh, I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry. Thank you so much, Dave. Okay, let me step back one moment and ask for a motion that you'll find in your agenda regarding our engagement with Polity.
I make a motion, Pam. I make a motion that the Board of Supervisors authorized the Township Manager to execute an agreement to engage Polity Inc. to facilitate an update to the Ferguson Township Strategic Plan.
Patty, I'll second. Thanks. I didn't do that already. Boy, I really lost track. Okay, all in favor of the motion, please say aye. Any opposed? Same sign. Okay, great. We've got unanimous approval. Thank you so much. Now let us please move forward. Thank you, Peter. To the University Park Airport Air Service Expansion Request for Support, now introduced by Dave Pabalka. Dave?
I'll just really turn it over. We have joining us this evening Commissioner Mike Pike, Chairman of the Center County Board of Commissioners, to talk about anything he'd like to present on the items.
Welcome, Commissioner Pipe. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you very much, Chair Denini and Manager Pabalka. As is laid out in the Supervisor's Agenda, it's a really good summary of what we're looking at doing. But essentially, uh, back in 2012, 2013, there was an incentive package put together to attract United Airlines to establish a connection from the University Park Airport, State College Airport, Center County Airport, whatever you want to call it, going to Chicago. And essentially, it was very successful that, that, that connection is still established. And so there have been ongoing talks at the Airport Authority and also Penn State on their side of the airport have been having with American Airlines to get a connection to their international hub, which is located in Charlotte. These conversations go back to 2007. And the Commissioners had a meeting with the Airport Authority as we appoint several members to it. Just wanted to see what kind of partnerships we could establish. And the idea was floated about how potentially we could use some of our American Rescue Plan Act funds, which every municipality in Center County got a portion, to use them as an, towards an incentive pool. And essentially, under the ARPA, you can use funds for tourism. That's one of the things that was, was put into the legislation to make sure that we're attracting more folks to visit here. And so the county Commissioners, a week or so ago, dedicated a quarter million dollars to that incentive pool. And I've been having conversations as the Chair of the Board of Commissioners with the Chairs of many of the Center Region municipalities and also some of the municipalities that, that appoint individuals to the Center County Airport Authority. And so the conversations have been great. And as again, in, in your agenda packet there, there's a listing of some of the municipalities that have dedicated funds. We do also have requests into Benner and Spring as well, and Belfont Borough, waiting on their reply as well. But essentially, we feel really strong with the package that Penn State is putting together in terms of some of the incentives that they can offer from the airport side of things. And some of the things that the Center County Airport Authority can also do as well. And so we're taking the lead on this, putting again, up, uh, putting a quarter million dollars in. And I think one of the, the really salient points is this money will only be spent if they decide to come. If they don't decide to come and they don't establish the flight, the money would, would be kept with each of the municipalities and there wouldn't be anything lost from that conversation. But we think it's, it would be a great opportunity for tourism, but also for economic development as well. And so I, I'm happy to answer any questions. If I can't answer them, Jim Meyer and the folks at Penn State would, I can get answers for you and relate, relay that back to your team, but happy to answer any questions. But I really appreciate the opportunity for you to have this on the agenda so that we can have, have a conversation about it tonight.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Pipe. All right, Board Members, do we have any questions? I have two questions before we open up to discussion or comments. My first question would be, what would be the, I, I didn't see it. I might not, I might have just missed it. But what would be the term of the commitment to continue those flights?
Sure. So the minimum of flights would be 12 over the course of a week. And so they can, they're going to spread that out. Could be three flights occur in one day. There's no flights on days that it's low, but at minimum 12, we could see that even increase. But essentially, the way that major airlines, and I've kind of gotten a, a quick and dirty understanding of this, kind of a 101 has been that, you know, when they establish a new connection at a new airport, they under, they appreciate the fact that there's going to be a time where they're not going to be, you know, making as much as they could in the long run. And so what they'll do is they'll, you know, they'll often look for incentive packages. So we can structure this in a way that basically they would get a, a portion of money each month or each quarter for as long as they stay here. And if they would decide to leave, the money again would be returned or would, would not have to go out of the coffers of the municipalities. But I'm thinking, you know, there's been talks about it being 18 months, 24 months, 36 months. But it's essentially however long the airline thinks that they're going to need to assist, to, to establish those connections. So that agreement would be worked on again with American Airlines, depending on their comfort level. And once they get the, the, the package that's being put together of the incentives delivered to them on Wednesday, on a, on a conference call we're going to be having, but then they're going to start the negotiations at that point. So I could see it being anywhere from 18 months to 36 months during, from the conversations we've had with the Airport Authority.
Thank you so much. And then my other question was, I saw that there were other municipalities listed. And I wondered, was Penn State also partnering on this endeavor?
Yes, they are. They, yes, they are.
I'm sorry if I missed that as well.
No, no. And, and the one, and I, I've been cognizant not to steal their thunder on this. They certainly, I think, are going to be announcing what they are going to be contributing. So I don't want to speak for them, but it is, I think, I think it's going to be very helpful in, in that conversation.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Okay, those were my only questions. Do we want to go to Board Discussion now? Can also entertain a motion. Pam, did you want to, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I have one question. Did, did I hear right that this is an international hub in, in Charlotte?
That is correct. Yes, Pam. It's, it's, um, the sixth largest airport, I think, in the, in the country. And Commissioner Higgins had brought that up at our last Board of Commissioners meeting. But yes, it is a, it is an international hub, which would be very attractive again to the great international community we have in, in, in Penn State. And, you know, they would just stop, be able to establish a little bit easier access in and out of the country, or of the university in the country. I'll say yes, it is an international hub at the Charlotte Airport.
Thank you.
Great question.
It's going to steal a little thunder from Philly.
I think, and I think one of the, and, and actually, that's a great point. One of the things that would be established, the agreement with American Airlines is we wouldn't be diminishing or taking away from that flight because there's a lot of use that gets, that is done through the flight that's from University Park Airport to Philadelphia. But in terms of customers that may, instead of flying out of Philly, they might drive here and, and fly out of here, that'd be terrific.
Thanks. Good question. I, I think Steve, was your hand up?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment. I think that this is, in my opinion, a better use for our economic development funds that we've established than the individual business things that we've done in the past. I think that airline service will be a bigger boost for business in general. I also think ever since we lost the connect, or lost the hub in Pittsburgh, it has been a lot more hassle to fly from here because not, not willing to complain about Philly, but I will. That's a hard airport to fly through. It's, uh, I think it would improve. Charlotte is a good airport for operating a hub, so.
Thanks, Steve. Lisa?
Yeah, I was just the same train of thought as Steve. I really appreciate the idea of this connection to such a large airport. And I think this is an interesting choice. I think it will make, it's, it'll provide convenience for a lot of residents here, I think. And, you know, I appreciate the Commissioners reaching out to the Townships to get involved. And I think, I think that's, I think that's great.
Thank you, Lisa.
For ready.
Yeah, sure.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I, no, go ahead.
If you want to ask something before I make the motion, maybe.
Uh, just quickly, yeah, and I apologize. I'm kind of learning this with all you. But I, as far as Commissioner Pipe, is the county going to administer this agreement then on behalf of all the partners? Is that going to be done through another agency or who, who's going to kind of have the responsibility to ensure compliance and any clawback if they don't meet that?
It's going to be a great question. It's going to be a partnership between the Airport Authority and Penn State side of operations. And most likely, or it, it's going to be very similar to what happened with the United Flight where there's certain, there's an actual, you know, legal agreement that's executed and will exist. And that would be the, that, that will essentially just keep everybody on the, on the terms. So as we know, ARPA funds do not have to be spent until the end of 2026. They need to be allocated by the end of 2024. So we do have a, no pun intended, a long runway on this one. So if the, uh, if the agreement would go into, you know, three years from now, or, you know, however long, we would still be able to have that, those funds trickling out. And again, you're, you're absolutely right, Manager Pabalka. We would have sort of a timetable for the billing for each of the municipalities when they would have to pay. And it could be spread out over a number of different, of number of months. But yeah, it would be a partnership again between University Airport Authority. And I think the county, we could help assist since we are contributing the most on this one.
Thank you.
Thanks. So then just to confirm, so if there were, if there were a problem and we did need to receive the money back, the county would be going to bat for us, basically?
Absolutely, absolutely. Yes.
Great, great.
Yeah, we would, we'd be happy to help.
Yeah, hopefully it won't result in that, but you always have to be prepared. So, great. Okay, sure. I would entertain a motion.
Lisa, I'll move to the Board of Supervisors, authorize an appropriation of $10,000 to supplement an incentive package for American Airlines to provide direct service from University Park Airport to Charlotte, North Carolina.
A second.
Thank you. We have dueling seconds. Secretary, it's your choice. So I, 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 I will also support this. It, it is difficult for me because of the competing priorities of addressing climate change and the concerns I have with air travel and that. But I also recognize the practicality and the market that we are in. So I kind of though, wouldn't forgive myself if I couldn't, if I didn't at least mention that. And I know that the Commissioners are strongly in support of climate change, uh, planning and adaptation. So I know this comment won't fall on deaf ears. And I appreciate all that you all have done in that respect very much. Just look forward to more localization of our economy. So with that said, if there's no other comments, I'll call for a vote.
Well, I just want to echo Laura, your concern about the environment there too. And that's been my thing. I, I, I beg anybody who will listen to me at the state, county, whatever level, please don't start with no, but I really would love to see a train line somehow find its way to State College. You know, whether we join down to Lewis Town and get on that, anything. So I would echo what you're saying there, but yes, I absolutely support this as well.
Thanks, Patty.
I agree on the environmental concerns.
Thanks.
We need, we need planes that run on renewables.
I think solar planes are a thing for a very few amount of people, I believe, in the world so far. I don't know. I don't know. I don't want to spread misinformation. I don't want to spread misinformation.
Hemp oil fuel.
So, okay, so thank you so much, Commissioner Pipe. Any other comments or questions? Okay, with that, I'd like to call for a vote. All in favor of the motion, please say aye. Any opposed, same sign. All right, looks like motion passes unanimously. Thanks so much, Commissioner Pipe, for joining us, and thank you, board.
Thank you for your consideration. Thank you.
All right, next up, we have the Award of Contract 2016-C11, the Automated Traffic Signal Performance Metrics. And tonight, this will be introduced by Dave Probaka. Dave?
Thank you very much. Typically, the Public Works Director would deliver these openers, but he's out on vacation. So I'll do my best. I'm pretty well familiar with this, as are many of you, actually. This has been talked about now for several years. And provided with your agenda, you'll see the announce, or the bid results for the publicly advertised project. And this is to install a traffic signal performance metrics system software at each of the township's 21 signalized intersections. So essentially, these traffic signals will be enhanced with technology that allows the signals to communicate back with a centralized location at the township building, right in Ron Cybert Township Engineer's Office. And he'll be able to analyze data real time to help make adjustments to signal timing, improve efficiency of traffic mobility, and hopefully improve our, our intersection grid. So there's also options for future enhancements as we enter into an era of increasingly smart vehicles that we need to provide the bandwidth for and have to be prepared to accommodate. We'll have a lot of that backbone in place that'll better suit us for what's to come. So this is a grant, largely a grant-funded project. The budgeted amount for this was just under $600,000. So you'll note that the bid came in a little over $20,000 over budget when you net everything out. However, we are going to be able to revise the scope of work to bring us below budget. So we'll be able to meet our grant obligation and our local match in order to make this project a reality. And the way we're going to do that is by, assuming the board approves this contract this evening, we'll issue a deduct change order or reduction in scope tomorrow. So we're going to carve out some of the nice-to-haves but not need-to-haves in order to make this project a reality. There are some signal controllers that we have, for example, that we identified within the scope of this project to upgrade and improve that can accommodate the signal optimization software we're installing. So we're not going to upgrade those signal cabinets since there don't need to be others that are too archaic or antiquated that we do need to bring in new equipment for. We're still going to keep in the scope. So there's, there's a few there as well. I believe that summarizes everything fairly well, and I know we've talked about this now for several years. So it's exciting to see this sort of come to, come to, well, at least part of this project come to a close. And now the real headache starts for Ron Cybert and our consultant at Jacobs Engineering. If there's any questions, I'll do my best to answer them. If I can't answer them, I'll get you answers and report back.
Thank you, Dave. Do we have any questions? Pat, oh, competing questions. Patty first, please.
I just had a question. So do, does Ron Cybert currently have the technology, like the hardware that he needs to receive this? I won't even pretend that I understand the difference between a radio wave or whatever. But just making sure he has the technology and the equipment he needs in his office.
Yeah, there'll be, there'll be some software enhancements that he'll have to have installed and adjust. But all of the hardware is, is exactly the way it needs to be. So even though we do have some communication that's being done through radio transmitters, those are mostly for areas that we weren't able to get good line of sight. And so it was just a matter of practicality that we elected to go with some of the, I guess, wireless transmitters. Where we can, though, we're either using existing fiber or relaying new fiber in ground. So it's all going to be hardwired back to the township facility. So the short answer is yes, there will have to be some training and some new, you know, software that he'll have to familiarize himself with. But it's really a language that he speaks pretty fluently already, so I don't foresee any issues with that.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Patty. Good question. I don't know what I don't know, and I wouldn't have even known to ask that question. Good question. Steve?
I just had a question about the adjustments in order to keep it below the amount. I guess, you know, $20,000 is a lot of money, but it's still less than 3% of this whole contract. I was just wondering, are we going to be cutting something that would be worth keeping in in order to get below $600,000? Or, yeah, or is it something that really is pretty much just an addition that isn't necessary?
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that. I mean, we have looked at this pretty carefully. The signal control cabinets, you know, really, as, as we were going through this project and it developed over the years, it snowballed, not in scope, but we brought in, you know, there was equipment that was very valid at the beginning, or that was very cutting edge and new at the beginning of this project about five years ago that, you know, now we're looking at whether it could still meet those needs. So anything that's on that, that perhaps isn't the newest, the latest and greatest, but could still meet our needs, Ron added it to the scope. But it's not, nothing in there that will, that will carve out in order to, you know, kind of be mindful of cost containment will in any way jeopardize the performance of this software. It's really just, these are, these signal control cabinets will replace, but will replace them within our normal routine maintenance and update schedule like we would have if it weren't for this project.
Okay, so it doesn't add any extra cost then to pull it off?
Right, correct. Yeah, you're not right. We're not kind of being a penny wise, pound foolish. This, this will just be something that we work back into our routine maintenance schedule, which we do every year.
Thanks, Steve. Good question. All right, if there's no other questions, I'd love to entertain a motion.
I'll move that the Board of Supervisors Award Contract 2016-C11 Automated Traffic Signal Performance Metrics, Wyoming Electric and Signal Incorporated, in accordance with their bid, in the amount of $619,276, I guess with the change as described by the manager.
This is Patty. I'll second.
Thanks, Steve and Patty. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any, any opposed, same sign. Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. And next up, we have the Fairbrook Park Grow Zone Map Amendment, introduced by Township Manager Dave Probaka.
Thank you. Actually, I'll ask Centris. I wasn't sure if Centris was going to join us this evening, so I didn't put her on as an, but did you want to say a few words about this and introduce it?
Yeah, so in July of 2021, at a regular meeting, the Board of Supervisors directed staff to develop an amendment to the Grow Zone map for Fairbrook Park, primarily to improve the maintenance schedule and reduce the spread of invasive species and ticks. So provided with the agenda this evening is a copy of the amended Fairbrook Park Grow Zone map with the yellow strip marked in the southeast of the park to indicate the mowing along between the wooded area and the road for separation between the woods and the grassland. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much, Centris. And I appreciate staff working on this. I have, I have a question, but I'm going to hold it until others ask questions. So I'll, I'll ask for questions, and then we'll take a motion, and then we'll discuss. So does anybody have any questions specific to the map or what was presented? Like, understanding things and whatnot. Pam?
Yes, my only question is, will mowing be the major way to reduce invasives and ticks without pesticides and herbicides and stuff like that?
Yes. Yeah, there, there's nothing that this map would introduce as, that would require the application of any herbicides or pesticides. It's clearly just a main.
Are there any used there now? I mean.
Yes, there are. Center Region Parks and Rec does selective application. So does, so does the township, in fact, for, for our roadside mowing needs with certified applicators. So depending on the location, they will use herbicides to control invasives.
Good question. I'll have a, we can have some comments and discussion on that because I think it's a, we can slip a little bit of that into our discussion tonight while still staying on the agenda item. Do we have any other questions about the map? And then we'll discuss content, some things that are, maybe could be introduced in discussion period. Any other questions? I have a question about the map. So I, it's more of a realization than a question. So, so, but maybe it's a question, sorry. So the, the trapezoid or triangular minus the top area has got the two yellow stripes in it that are mode path. And in that case, they are actually a path. We did that for access from the neighborhood or the households into the park, how they were accustomed to prior to the Lomo thing happening there. And then also, if you look into the red, you have no idea what to call that shape, the red blob in the right corner, there's a tiny little hatched yellow mark that is also a mode path. Now, the reason I'm pointing that out is because then, when you look at the upside-down UV type of shape that we're talking about really tonight, that is actually more of a perimeter around the grow zone. I'm not even asserting that we should necessarily change anything tonight. But the reason I'm pointing that out is because as we continue to evolve this kind of a policy, I think we'll want to evolve our map legend maybe to indicate what is a quote "mode path", and then what is maybe a perimeter. I'm not necessarily sure about that, but it's just something that I noticed because if you look in the park where that UV upside-down type shape, like what it connects, it connects the way it's written to the edge of the parkland. And people probably, it's not really necessarily a path, per se. I might be just overthinking this as well. That's entirely possible. But while we were looking at this, I just kind of wanted to, to bring that up. And as we talk together about the green infrastructure policy. So like, the question, it's not really a question, but the future question might be, would we be distinguishing those mode paths from simply a mode perimeter around a piece of infrastructure? And the reason that might be important is because in the future, hopefully, the communication tool is more a SOP or a standard operating procedure of making a perimeter around green infrastructure than a map of mode paths. It's just something to maybe think about for the future. But in terms of this being a good communication tool for the mowing folks, I think that it nails it spot on and was exactly what we were hoping for. Sorry, that's a little bit of discussion with my question, but if there's no other questions, I'll take a motion, and we can fully move into any more discussion. Okay, it looks like there's no other questions. So if anybody wants to make the motion that you can find in your agenda?
This is, I'll move that the Board of Supervisors approved the amendment to the Fairbrook Park Grow Zone map.
Thank you. Any further, I'm sorry, a second, please.
This is Patty. I'll second.
Fantastic. All right, further discussion. Pam had put something on the table. I want to refer to Pam, the question about herbicides and pesticides and being used in parks. I think you wanted to follow up with that. So if you wanted to.
Well, basically, I would like to see us use as little as possible. I, I see a lot of places where herbicides are used, like around little posts and around signposts, and, and I feel like I don't think that's really necessary. I mean, I think you could, you could use, and either leave it because it's really not that unsightly, or use some kind of weed whacker or something to, to just keep it back. I think we need to use as little as possible, poisoning the planet, and we shouldn't be doing that. If it were up to me, we wouldn't use any. I know that that's an impossibility because we just don't have the labor force to do stuff like that. In the case of parks, I'm just wondering if, I don't know, this is just a thought to, to, to have weed-pulling parties, you know, get Boy Scouts and Sierra Club people and, and, you know, people who might be interested in it, bird club people, who knows? And maybe a couple of times a year, just go out there and rip stuff out that has to come out. It's just a thought.
Thanks, Pam. So I'll just also tie this a little bit back to the map and mode paths and paths, and then also maybe the Park and Rec Open Space Plan that we're working on. So this map in particular, there are mode paths in Ferguson, or in Fairbrook Park, same park which we're going to be doing that master plan for. There are also paths that are like gravel, compacted gravel. These are one of the areas that there's a high amount of herbicide use because what happens is the mowers put grass on top, and then the grass tries to form dirt, and then the dirt wants to grow weeds. And so it's actually an infrastructure issue where if they were paved, there would be less herbicide use. So it, pathways can be a place where herbicides are used. In the case of this particular map and where we're looking at this amendment, will not be the case. And in fact, it would be one, it would be a kind of a strategy of, of reducing invasive species. So there's less hand-pulling, weed-pulling parties needed because they're labor-intensive. But it is, it is a good idea, and other municipalities like State College Borough frequently ask for volunteers to work in their parks, very frequently. So I think it's, you know, definitely a topic for our POS discussion and future discussion, both the citizen involvement and how they can help maintain these kinds of areas, and also use of herbicides and pesticides. So just kind of tying that all together.
One more thing that just came to mind is it may be more enticing to make it plant and pull, like maybe while you're organizing people, not just to be tearing stuff out, but to also be planting things. That, that might be a real cool way to approach it, too.
Thanks, Pam. And on this map, actually, two of the areas that, I think it's just two, the blue hatched areas are intended to be in the longer term intentional plantings for pollinators. So, yes, that could be definitely an opportunity where we could involve volunteers that then would have a sense of ownership over those areas and want to continue their relationship with them. So, all good ideas.
Weed parties in the park, got it.
Yeah. Make a note of that. Patty?
I just.
Wait a minute, Dave. Watch out.
Weed pulling parties.
Yeah, I was going to say, maybe we should run up by the chief or something. Patty, back to you.
I, I also remember when we lived in Bethesda, my kids were part of like a weed warrior program, and they could get service hours too for school for being a part of that.
So cool. I love it, love it, love it. I look forward to some of our engagements with the Park, Rec and Open Space Plan. So I'm hoping we can get some of this cool content into there. Okay, with that said, any further discussion on the map amendment?
Just, I make one comment. You brought up a good point. I just wanted not gloss over it. You, Mr. Nanny's correct. There are pieces of this green infrastructure, or this grow zone map, that are not going to be, I guess, maybe long-term, we were hoping to have some of these already kind of planted and constituted already. But they're not just going to be the, the no-mow areas. They're going to be more intentionally planted with a pollinator, native pollinator mix pollinator, native pollinator mix that will require a little more hands-on maintenance. There's going to be some more um, physical pulling of weeds as opposed to just mowing over it once or twice a year. Um, and so we'll, we'll have that. It's in this, it's in the capital improvement program. It, it will make its way into the budget that you look at uh, later on uh, this fall. And uh, and hopefully we'll be able to do something a little bit more strategic with those areas starting next year.
Thanks so much, Dave. Exciting.
I have one tiny more thing to mention since we're talking about parks and mowing and um, that little songbird, songbird park. That seems to be just kind of not enterable because it needs a path. Can, can we decide if we're gonna get somebody to mow that so people can get in there and enjoy it?
Pam, you must be psychic because low and behold, um, the park and rec uh, committee of Ferguson Township did just um, discuss the Songbird Sanctuary Master Plan and beginning to um, hone in on implementation of that. Uh, does staff care to comment at all on that process while we're talking about parks?
Yeah, I'm happy to add a little bit of an update. So the Parks and Recreation Committee did just review a um, the, the narrative that was done internally by staff as well as a few members of the, of the town, like township residents. And I believe we had a representative of CRPR as well. So, so in 2019, uh, there were a group of people organized between township staff and CRPR and township residents to come up with a master plan for Songbird Sanctuary. There was some public outreach there at Owen Circle uh, to get feedback from the residents and it's kind of been a work in progress since COVID. Uh, we got delayed and had to kind of reprioritize. But it did, um, the, the narrative for the master plan as well as a map, go in front of the Parks and Recreation for a final comment and review with hopes that we get um, a little bit more feedback from a few other groups. And then it'll come to the Board of Supervisors for review and consideration. Once that is um, approved, then we are able to implement a some of the passive amenities that are, that are provided.
Fantastic. Thank you, sent Reese. And it was a good question, Pam. All right, with that.
I'm wondering what the public outrage was.
What? Well, I remember snow cones on a hot day and staff being there. That's what I remember. It was a nice outreach event, but it was hot.
Oh, oh, was it outreach or outrage?
Outreach. It was outreach. Yeah.
I thought you said outrage and I, and I thought, who would be outraged by that? Okay, we're good. Sorry.
Well, we did. I mean, we had a lot of good feedback from, from those discussions about repositioning some of the pedestrian trails, but largely the uh, neighboring property owners were excited to see uh, the, the prospect of something happening back there. Sentry said we'll have that for the board's consideration soon.
Great. That's great. Thank you so much. All right. Um, so let's go ahead and vote on our map amendment. We've got a motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Okay, motion passes unanimously and we are moving on to the authorization to amend chapter 27 zoning, section 710 wireless communication facilities ordinance. Dave, it looks like you were also introducing this.
I am. Thank you very much. I'm wearing a lot of hats this evening. So I'm, and I'm going to keep the comments read. There's a lot of narrative that's in the agenda and there's a couple of attachments as well uh, that you can uh, review if you haven't already, but essentially Pennsylvania Act 50, which was just signed into law at the end of June, is really regarded as one of the most government-friendly um, wireless communications facilities uh, laws in the, in the country. It was presented in step with the Pennsylvania Municipal League and a lot of these telecommunications providers. And really what it focuses on is not the 200-foot monopole or lattice cell towers that you might be used to seeing uh, on your commute, more on these smaller cell arrays, distributed antenna systems, uh, mini cell towers that are being a little bit, becoming more and more prevalent as the need for more bandwidth um, just goes really through the roof. We want all of our appliances to be connected and of course, there has to be a way to uh, tie that all back into the, to the uh, broad, to broadband, high-speed internet. So um, uh, there are most commonly, these are installed by third-party providers. So in other words, it wouldn't be a Verizon that's putting these up. It would be a uh, um, the third-party purveyor or installer of these small cell towers. And then they basically lease that space, the, the use of those small cell tower systems to Verizon, AT&amp;T, uh, et cetera. So some, I mean, there, there's a little bit of um, uh, kind of spillover in, in that world as well. So you do see some of the bigger carriers putting these in, but the focus of this legislation is on small cell towers, not the large-scale ones. What the law does is provides for um, very well-defined regulations for local governments to follow that uh, give the government agency the peace of mind, I guess, that the right-of-way will be properly maintained and restored. It provides for how permits are considered. Um, it provides for fees that we can affix to these installers uh, for the occupancy of our right-of-way. Um, obligations that they restore to our standards, et cetera. And um, there is a uh, a, a lot of language in there that is friendly to the utility provider, to these small cell providers as well. It gives them uh, the right to occupy our, our right-of-way as opposed to, you know, the, a little bit more murky legislative arena that they had to operate prior to this. There's an effective date of this legislation uh, of October 28th, meaning that if local ordinances aren't updated by then, were preempted by the state law. Um, s- some of us on staff have taken a pretty thorough look at the legislation and uh, haven't had an opportunity to uh, hear from some of our colleagues at the Pennsylvania Municipal League and Cohen Law Group, who's a telecommunications uh, law firm in the Commonwealth that's pretty highly regarded and was very instrumental in helping develop this legislation. And we're confident that we can amend our ordinance in-house. So we're not recommending that we engage, as we sometimes do, a specialized consultant or law firm to help us with this. Um, it's, it's all fairly straightforward stuff and much of what's in our ordinance frankly is already uh, generally compliant. It might need a little bit modification here and there. Uh, but we're, we're not really talking major wholesale amendments and, and most of the applications of this new legislation. So um, as is typical, I, I want to get uh, approval from the board before I move ahead with this amendment. It's going to be a, a fairly significant undertaking. I don't expect that will be done by October 28th. So if we do receive any applications after that deadline, we'll just note to review them in the context of the legislation as opposed to our ordinance and wherever our ordinance is more, more restrictive or unclear on a specific provision or conflicts with the legislation, then Pennsylvania Act 50 will be uh, what we look to as, as setting the um, as preemptive in that, in that application. So again, there's a motion in the agenda. I can answer any specific questions you might have.
Thank you, Dave. Let's start with a motion.
I'll move that the board of supervisors authorize staff to prepare an amendment to the Wireless Communications Facilities Ordinance.
Steve, do I have a second?
Second.
Pam, thank you, Pam. Pam, seconds. All right. Do we have any further questions or comments, concerns? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. All right, motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Steve. And looks like um, Jenna has some more work cut out for her.
Well, actually, this, this will be a uh, kind of an administrative function. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna delegate this one. So sent Reese and I'll get to work on a couple. We'll, we'll consult with Jenna. We'll have to consult in the planning office because there's zoning applications. We'll also have to consult with Dave Modricar as the right-of-way administrator because of course, there's uh, right-of-way occupancy uh, applications to this as well. But we'll, we'll look to have something back to you. Um, ideally, probably won't be till, you know, early next, early part of next year uh, until we have a draft for you to look at. Of course, if we can beat that, great, but um, as, as far as priorities go, this will not probably, there, there are some other things that this will wait behind uh, for us to get done.
Gotcha. Thanks so much, Dave, and good luck, Dave and sent Reese then on this project. Okay, next up, we have the authorization to submit a variance application for the installation of solar arrays on the Ferguson Township Public Works Maintenance Facility. Dave Provoca introducing.
Thank you. So with the agenda, there's a copy of the variance app, variance application I prepared uh, for the zoning hearing board to consider. As the uh, introduction notes, it's uh, to accommodate our solar array installation on Public Works Building 6. That's the new uh, Public Works Maintenance Facility that was designed to be LEED Gold certified. Uh, the installation of rooftop solar arrays was really a critical component of the basis of design that was discussed uh, back in 2017 when it was approved. Uh, since that time, the board and staff undertook a pretty sweeping amendment to our zoning ordinance, which included the introduction of the solar ordinance that we now have um, in, in place in, under our supplemental regulation section of our zoning ordinance. So um, there are a number of provisions in there, most of which were meeting with no issue, but there was a um, kind of a uh, uh, unusual, I guess, or an unanticipated outcome of one of them, which is the subject of this variance application, which basically says that if you are standing on the street next to a facility that has rooftop solar, you can't, you, you are not, you can't be able to see that solar array that's rooftop mounted. So whoever's um, undertaking the project has to either uh, accommodate that through their building design via a parapet or some other structural enhancement or perhaps a landscape feature or a fence, some kind of screening so that people that are on street level aren't able to see that solar array. Um, we may ask the board to modify that in the future, but at least for right now, because we're on a critical path, we need to um, secure a variance from the zoning hearing board. So I'm asking for uh, your authorization to submit that. If you approve it, we'll have it on the agenda for the zoning hearing board to consider on September 28th. And it won't greatly impact our uh, critical path. It's already, I mean, it's, this whole project has been delayed a little bit, not just because of this issue, but because of some things that are happening in the solar market right now. So it's really essential that we keep moving forward uh, in order to um, you know, keep our costs contained and, and be able to meet our deadline.
Thank you so much, Dave. Let's uh, start with a motion, please.
Pam, um, I'll make a motion that the board of supervisors will authorize the submission of a variance application to the zoning hearing board for relief from section 27 dash 713 8B of the Township Zoning Ordinance.
This is Patty. I'll second.
Thank you, Pam. And Patty, any questions or comments for Dave? Pam.
I have a general comment. I was actually kind of shocked to see this. Um, I think we need to encourage solar to be seen by the public. I think by, by people seeing it, they get interested in it. They might consider it for their own home. Um, I don't think it's something that we should be hiding now if we're trying to encourage renewable energy. Um, is there a way to, I, I mean, I, I, the ordinance states um, something like uh, building mounted systems, mounting a flat roof uh, shall not be visible to the public, same as HVAC or uh, mechanical equipment. And, and, and I think we, we need to take solar out of that or excuse solar at this time especially. Um, we'll, we'll talk about solar a little bit later. Um. But I mean, it's obviously we can't change that tonight, which would be nice, but we can't. So I wanted to throw that in there.
Yeah, sometimes we wish we had a magic wand that we could just, oh, let's fix that up right quick. Um, it's not quite how it works though.
Have it done.
Yeah, yeah. But I think this is a good point. I think staff is probably supportive of that idea, just um, kind of prioritizing it. Um, one thing we can certainly do proactively is just make sure that whatever has worked itself into the regional recommendations does not include this piece. Um, I think there are some regional recommendations about a solar ordinance. So we want to make sure that um, that mistake isn't repeated while we're working on um, that, are fixing that. Um, any other comments or questions about the variance um, request? Okay, seeing none, let's go ahead and vote on that motion. All in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. All right, motion passes unanimously. Uh, next up is the Center Region Park and Recreation Governance Discussion, and I'll introduce this agenda item. Um, I really just uh, wanted to put this on the agenda because it's another important project that will be embarking on. This one led by COG. Um, included with the agenda is a copy of the communication from Rich Frank, who is a college township council member. Um, and he put that forward uh, through the COG Executive Committee uh, in July, and the committee was very supportive of that. So since that point in time, that communication has been making its way through the COG committee structure for um, relevant committees to comment on it, just to really let them know it's occurring and that there might be an appointment um, that would be coming, say, for example, from Facilities Committee and COG Parks Capital Committee. Um, so I just really wanted to give the board time to make any comments on the um, proposal that um, Rich Frank put forward. Um, and then also there, um, there was, um, there were some recommendations that were made in the Regional Park Comprehensive Plan that was recently completed uh, regarding governance. And so um, I would also like to highlight them a little bit for the board just so that we, it's, you know, it's a complicated issue and I kind of want to get some stuff out on the table early so we can all um, learn enough to be able to contribute to the conversation um, as it unfolds. Um, just because, I mean, we've all seen that comp plan, but really have had very little actual interaction with it. Um, so I thought it was important, you know, with all of our competing priorities to kind of get that out in front um, and make sure everybody's aware of it um, before we get too involved in that discussion. So uh, first, um, I just would open it up to any comments or thoughts on um, Mr. Frank's proposal. And so does anyone uh, have any comments or thoughts on that? Anything that they wanted to share? In particular, uh, there's a composition of the committee that's been suggested and um, trying to scroll down to that. Uh, there's also some, some guiding thoughts on maybe what the purpose of this committee or task force would be. Uh, the membership of this task force that Mr. Frank had suggested was two members of the Center Region Park and Rec Authority, one member of the COG Executive Committee, one member from the Parks Capital Committee, one member from the Facilities or the Finance Committee, and one member of COG staff as designated by the Executive Director, and one member of municipal staff selected by consensus of the manager. And so two, three, four, five, six, seven, a seven, seven-member committee with that composition. Um, so I guess to focus our dialogue a little bit, if, if anybody has any thoughts on the composition of that committee that they wanted to share, um, this will continue to be discussed at, at executive. So when I go there, it's great to have your thoughts. Patty.
Um, yeah, no, I, I don't have too much exception with it. I actually am very supportive of the discussion, et cetera. I am just, I wish that we, as a township, could somehow have more of a voice in who we have as our representative on that from our Board of Supervisors as opposed to letting it be decided by the COG Committees, but that would be my only thought on that.
Thanks, thanks. I also had some concerns about the level of municipal representation. Not to be kind of turf warish, but there's just so much from the municipal side that needs to be conveyed in that conversation. So putting it all on one manager that's been selected to represent the municipalities, when each of the municipalities have such stark differences as well, was a little bit. So it was something that concerned me. I have some thoughts on maybe how we can how we can address that, but I'll hold them until we continue the conversation. Lisa, you had your hand up.
Yeah, generally, I thought Rich had a great proposal. I think this makes so much sense. Focusing just on the makeup of the task force. I, my question was the same as Patty's. Is there a way to, or similar, is there a way to make sure that there is broad representation across those committees from the different municipalities? So we don't end up with four, you know, from one municipality, but from four different committees. And I understand the desire to keep it small. You know, acknowledging that, but I, I think it could be served by a member from both the facilities and the Finance Committee. I think that might make sense to have a representative from each of those. And I really agree with the municipal staff comment. My first thought before I even looked down at that was thinking that there would be a representative from each municipality's staff. So either a manager or their designee, you know, whoever maybe works closely with their parks. So that would be my only other comment is, you know, if it's agreeable to, you know, to have one staff person from each participating municipality on there.
I agree. Maybe, maybe, maybe it needs to be a task force of a dozen instead of seven.
Thanks, Steve. Steve, thoughts?
I, my feeling on committees like this has always been, you have to have a representative of each municipality for it to be functional. I, I don't think we can, I would, I would be opposed to going by COG Committee. And I, I think each municipality should select a a member to represent that municipality, because these are going to be fairly extensive, or discussions of fairly extensive changes in the way we operate a COG program. And I, I think if you don't have each municipality represented, it's not going to succeed. So that, that's what I would take to executive. It's just that, you know, I, I, I understand the desire to look at it a different way and represent interests rather than municipalities, but I think for a COG action, you've got to represent municipalities. That's, that's the only way it works, in my opinion, so.
Thanks, Steve. I, I have pretty strong agreement with that. And I was looking at what Rich's proposal was, because it, you know, it does highlight another aspect that's also important. That's why Chuck and Pam talked about like a larger committee, because I also really strongly agree with what you're saying, Steve, because ultimately what you need is you need buy-in from each of the municipalities that it's going to really work for them.
And it's probably going to require a unanimous agreement ultimately. I can't imagine any change to Wooden, so.
Right, right. So that, it also sort of relates to my comment, which is something we did with the Parks Comp Plan Committee that I, I wasn't a fan of, but I was open-minded about, but I really didn't. In the end, I didn't love how it was a mix of both elected officials and staff. So like, I also understand why each perspective is important, but there's a there's a dynamic that's created when staff are on an elected official and appointee committee, where eventually there's going to be consensus of municipalities. So imagine being the manager that's appointed there, right, and representing all municipalities, but then you need to get the buy-in of your particular board at the end of the game. So it's just not that we all don't try to be very open-minded, but I just, I had some questions about that in in, in conjunction with like the representation needs. And just thinking about it, I wondered if kind of like a two-part process or a structure where in the committee level that it's electeds and appointeds, and then you have like subgroups of staff members that are working on specific problems. So like you could have the Public Works Directors of each of the municipalities working on certain maintenance questions that would be sent to them from the Steering Committee. The managers could be working on other questions that would be sent to them from the Steering Committee. So I don't, I don't know, I I don't know if I'm in love with my idea. I'm just trying to think of how we can incorporate all of the thoughts that we've had and that Rich had and the executive had into a functioning structure that will get us the results in the end that we want, which is buy-in and a fully functioning, great structure that we all really support. So I don't know if anybody wants to give me feedback on that. Not super well-thought-out idea, but I guess the effort to integrate all of those thoughts into a functioning committee. Anybody have any contra thoughts or supporting thoughts on that? Lisa?
Yeah, I guess I'll just say you, you bring up, you know, an important point about how we're saying, looking at the COG Committees that could potentially be on the task force, and you're listing departments within the municipality that are involved, and it really gets to the depth of you know, tentacles that this can reach even within the municipality and how complicated solving the problem could be. So, you know, I don't think that's a, I don't think that's a bad idea. I think it's something to yeah, to consider as, as you're moving down the road with it to present or get, you know, maybe a survey or some kind of feedback from Public Works Directors and Finance Directors. I think that's a really good point. I guess I'm still kind of stuck on the earlier point of removing these committee appointments from this task force and replacing them with elected official appointments. You know, what is the benefit of having representatives from the committees on there? I think, you know, I, I definitely think if it's a choice, I would opt for representation of the municipalities, of course. That's what I was saying earlier. You know, we need, would need to make sure that it's distributed evenly. You know, I don't, I don't know if there's any specialized knowledge that a committee representative would bring to this that they couldn't get from their member of their board that sits on that committee. So you know, whatever you can reach consensus on, I think, as long as the representation is equally a portion, I think, is is what I would place as the top priority.
That makes a lot of sense. And the idea of, yes, the representation of the municipalities, it does make the problem a fair amount, I think, maybe easier to attack, because then you do have that direct involvement of an elected official from each municipality who then can bring back to their home municipality, the question instead I'm talking about, the questions for the Public Works Director, the questions for the manager, the questions for the body, get feedback, take it back to the task force. So in terms of being a liaison, that also makes a fair amount of sense, because like you're saying, the Finance Committee member, who are they taking it back to? And then there is a difficult problem with then making sure both the diversity of the committees is represented and the diversity of the municipalities is represented and could be maybe a little bit difficult. So maybe a better structure would be representation of the elected officials and the authority. And then running it through the COG Committees, the finance facilities, Parks Capital, as progress is made, I guess, for feedback. And then what you have then is actually that whole committee being engaged instead of just one representative through the stages. I think that kind of makes sense to me. And actually, then, I guess that's a pretty good segue into just reminding folks that within that comp plan for parks, regional, for parks of the region, there were recommendations that were already made based on research that the consultants did and their interviews and their learning about our system and one of those recommendations, actually, interestingly, is to revise the composition of the governance body to actually include the authority members and a representative elected official from each of the municipalities. So really, what they're recommending as the eventual body of governance, which would result in twelve members, which is a lot. So we'll have to talk about that. But the interesting thing is that what we're suggesting is sort of a semblance of what they're actually suggesting for the final governance structure. So I think there's a pretty good match there, because they're already saying, these are the folks that know the needs. And we're saying, these are the folks that know the needs. Maybe that makes a lot of sense. And so I guess, you know, reviewing, one thing I'd like to see, which I'll put forward at the Executive Committee, too, is to to look at the recommendations that were made to, and to have that as part of the scope of the ad hoc committee. Because those recommendations were made through that process, but we as bodies haven't had the opportunity to really discuss them and see if we support them and how we'd like to change them. So the items that I emailed to before the meeting that are contained in that, that plan, I'll email to the Executive Committee as well, because like I said, we had the opportunity to see it, I think, once at General Forum in a formal manner and don't really have regular conversations about it. So we don't really know its content. So I'll keep putting that forward so we don't feel like we have to start from ground zero, because we really have some, some places to start here that the consultants had given us. So if you had the opportunity to read over any of those, and if you have any concerns or thoughts, what I'd really like to do is, however, the ad hoc committee ends up being composed and their meeting schedule, what I'd like us to continue to do, one way or another, is to have regular board, Ferguson Board check-ins to see, you know, what the board is aligning around as we move through that process, which might include in the future then a discussion of some of the points that were in that comp plan, if indeed the ad hoc task force does utilize that as a starting place. So I don't know if anybody had any initial thoughts on any of those those things, but some of the main thoughts were that the authority would really move into an advisory capacity. And that, like I said, the, the new governing body would be comprised of the authority members and also elected officials, plus an administrator from the school district to equal twelve members. So that's a pretty large body that we would be, you know, having. So it's some food for thought for all of us. So I don't know if anybody has initial thoughts, or if we want to, Steve?
Yeah, I just had one comment on that, that recommendation from the comp plan. And I think that we need to get some sort of legal advice before even embarking on that, because I haven't, I'm not that familiar with the Authorities Act. But I know that there is, that the scope and with authority can be changed, but it's not a simple process. And normally, it begins with the authority recommending the change. I don't know that that's the only way it can be done, but I do know that the municipalities that create the authority don't necessarily have the ability to go back and change that authority once they've done it. It becomes an entity that exists on its own. And I think we need to be careful about jumping into something where we're going to reimagine the authority without some legal information on, can we do that, even if it's in the comp plan?
It's such a good point, Steve. And while I was thinking about this earlier today, I was thinking about where are the solicitors in all of this? I think that down the road, for sure, they would be involved, because obviously, the documents are going to have to be revised. But I think your point is well-taken, that maybe it's not just at that point after we've made the decisions.
At the initial charge, we need to have an idea whether we can actually do what we're charging this committee to do.
Right, right. This is a good point. Yes, yes, good point. Any other thoughts? That was, yeah, very good. Dave?
May I make one comment? Thank you. There's, there's nothing that's been discussed this evening that gives me any cause for concern or anything. I just wanted to note if, if the outcome of this governance committee is a group that then engages different subsets of municipal staff, just note that in all cases, participants in the Parks Program are council manager form of government. So you would work through the managers. It wouldn't be the Public Works Directors have this charge and the Finance Directors have that one. You would just then direct or the managers to get whatever information is being requested. That may also serve a dual purpose of kind of narrowing the, all the, the hands that are in the cookie jar on this one, too. So
Got you.
Only comment I wanted to make. Thanks.
That makes sense. Thanks, Steve. Really, you're best to determine where that information is coming from, although I could take a stab in the dark. That makes sense. All right, any other thoughts? Okay, great. I think I've gotten really a fair amount of really great feedback for the next time this comes up at Executive Committee. And I, too, am really excited about being able to talk about governance. And I'm really pleased that Mr. Frank did put that forward. Just getting back to my agenda here. All right, we have no motion. That was just a discussion. Let's move on to staff and committee reports. First up, we, are we having a technical committee report? Or is that?
Yeah, I apologize. That got, I believe it got removed from the agenda or the attachments, but I don't know, it's still in there. That was supposed to have been removed, so. No, it was just in there for matter of record, right?
No problem. I actually read that, that agenda, thinking it was the coordinating committee, but it's no problem. Okay, so we don't have technical or coordinating correctly. So, okay. Then moving on to Finance Committee, Steve. Sorry, Steve, you're muted.
We're starting Thursday on our budget review. Thursday morning, it'll be a hybrid meeting. I just got the budget today. We go through it line by line, so. Four meetings, so. At our, at our last meeting, we did get an update on the, the benefit pension plan, the fine benefit pension plan. It was just information for the committee. The benefit pension plan, the fine benefit pension plan, it was just information for the committee. We got cog audit. We had an unqualified audit, which is good. Discussion of some of the, let's see, the fire department, space needs assessment and parks maintenance lease. Which will be going. Forward. Both of those. That was really about it. Then we discussed the. Some of the program plan information and how we're going to be going into that in the budget. So. The main thing was just we're sort of getting ready for the, the main. Discussion of the budget. So.
Thanks, Steve. I have a question. Does anybody else have a question for Steve? Okay, Steve, so my question, I, I keep asking the same question because. My brain is trying to absorb the answer so I can implement action. So. I'm sorry, you've heard this question before. I'm still getting up to speed on how I need to interact with the information. So the question is. On items that are in the cog budget, where there are differences between. Not necessarily the municipalities, but the recommendations that were made for the budget and what the municipalities think. So for example. In the case where the parks department wants to buy a truck and convert it into a food truck. There are multiple municipalities that are not very supportive, or at least weren't. Very supportive of that idea. And I would say a majority of the municipalities. So then. Staff from cog had responded to our comments. And they pretty much just reiterated information about. They want to do it and why they want to do it and that kind of thing. So would it be then, how does it then become a question at the budget meetings where. We delve deep, more deeply into it, like say, do you need to move to remove that from the budget? Or can you just put it forward for discussion? What, how does that happen? Thanks.
It will be, it would be a discussion item because the, the. Committee members all have the, the responses from each municipality. And those become part of the discussion on an item. And any committee member can bring up a discussion of the item. And something like that where multiple municipalities had comments, I'm sure we'll be discussing it. Ultimately. What happens is there'd either be a motion or to remove it, motion to change it. Or everybody would just sort of accept it as the way it is. And then we get, you know, put forward in the general. To the general forum in the final budget. At which point it can be, still be. Brought up at the general forum for any further discussion. You know, all the, the whole general forum vote on, but essentially it becomes a vote of the committee as to what gets forward to the general forum. And so the discussion in the committee will revolve in that. It would be a majority vote among the municipalities as to what stays in the budget or how it goes forward in the budget. And then. Then at the general forum, it's always open to discussion as well.
Right, right. But it is, it is kind of hard in general forum to have a discussion and there is an assumption that it's going to be vetted through the committee.
Right. And the committee will be having that discussion before it gets to the general forum.
Right.
And that's, I think that's the answer to the question you're wondering about.
And also after this meeting, so it'll be between now and general forums. So if we wanted to give you any direction on it, so. I know it's a small number compared to the rest of the budget. I think it's like thirty or forty thousand dollars compared to. A lot of money. I understand that. But for me, this particular item, because there was a fair amount of. Not going to say opposition, but you know, it was not in the CIP. It's a new program. There are a fair amount of concerns brought up again about it. Also, I feel fairly strongly about as government getting out of the way of local businesses and not interfering. And there's a. A lot of food trucks that would love to serve our parks. And I'd love to work with them to be able to find out what. Will enable them to serve our parks as opposed to. Buying a food truck and serving our parks when these businesses could do that. So. I know that this is not an agenda item, but I know in the past we have given some direction to committee members when we know that there's a discussion coming up. So what I would like, and I'm wondering if other board members are okay with this, is to ask Steve if he isn't already planning on it. To in that discussion, you know. Bring forward these points and perhaps. Even move to remove it so he can get a good discussion going about. The pros and cons of going into the food truck business as government versus allowing. The businesses to take care of that in incentivizing that. So. Briefly, if this is not, I don't want to put it forward and have us have a late meeting because there's a lot of. Difference and just Steve is going to do what he does as our committee member. But I did want to open that up to the board. To see if we have a fair amount of consensus on that. So board members, if you would weigh in. Patty, looks like she's nodding yes, but I'll let.
Yes.
Okay.
I, I totally agree. I think it's just yet another position. That needs to be filled. And you know, they, I, we've heard repeatedly about. How hard it was to get part-time or seasonal employees, et cetera, et cetera. It just seems like it's another staffing position that's unnecessary to try and wrangle with. So, yeah, I agree.
Thanks, Patty. Lisa or Pam?
So, so this is. This would be like instead of concessions. Is that basically?
Yes, I think the idea is that it would take place of concessions at various places where there's currently concessions, but maybe they are not fully. Like serving the need or something. And then also for special events.
Oh, okay. Well, I, I think it would be nice to be supportive of local small businesses and. Not get wrangled into yet another. Thing for the, you know, for the government to have to deal with. Sounds like a good idea to me. I think we might have to be careful though about. I mean. How it would be decided who would be. The ones going and I don't know if you have a lottery or, you know. Do us. Do it at number out of a hat or. There, there has to be some kind of a fair way of doing that.
Well, I think though, the part of the staff's argument is that. They have not had much interest in anybody doing it in the past. So I think it's more, more a question of. You know, not so much how you decide who does it, but how do you get somebody interested in doing it?
Who wants to do it?
Yeah. So I mean, I think that, that's pretty much the staff position and their comments that they made. So. But I. Yeah.
This has already been put out there and they. Get takers.
Well, I think that we can have more discussion about that at the cog to learn from the park authority and staff there. About that effort. And this conversation has made me think too, like. It maybe instead of a hard no, it's a, can you put it in the CIP for next year so we can talk about it a little bit? Instead of kind of jumping, jumping right in right now like this. So. Lisa, I want to go to you and then maybe you could wrap up any comments for Steve.
That's what I was going to say. I think that there's just too many questions to move forward with it at this minute. And Patty brought up such a good point about having to staff it. When staffing is such an issue. So I, I wouldn't necessarily put a no forever on it, but. You know, for this year, it seems like it would. You know, it would be worth exploring all the pros and cons over the next year. Like you said, put it in the CIP for a future year. And, and really studying what are the, what are the obstacles to getting some private businesses in there? So. Because that would be my, my first choice. So. Yeah, I think, I think. I think Steve maybe has the gist.
Yeah, yeah, good, 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 good.
And I basically agree with the comments that the board's made, so.
Thank you. So we're not forcing you into a position that you don't want to represent. You've been there before, I think.
Oh, yeah, that's fine.
Sounds good. Okay, okay. Thank you. And thank you, Steve and board for that late night discussion there. So next up, we have the climate action and sustainability committee. Pam, I believe this would be you.
Yes, it is.
Great.
The, oh, let me see here. Pam Adams presented the CAAP, the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan. It's in the process of, right now in the process of making corrections and additions to the draft. It's quite ambitious and detailed, as you can imagine. It's. I think it's over a hundred pages, including all the pictures and graphs and stuff. It basically, the CAAP provides a framework for launching into the implementation phase. That will help. Our community begin reducing greenhouse gas emissions and adapting to climate change as well. It's our region's first climate action plan. And cog envisions a phased approach for implementation. On September twenty seventh, the general forum will receive the presentation and forward the draft. CAAP to the municipalities for review and comments. Which are due back by October thirtieth. Pam's going to be presenting to the municipalities during October. On November eighth, the. Climate Action Sustainability Committee. Receives the CAAP. It's all these back and forth to incorporate municipal, the municipalities comments. And the updated version. Will get forward to the general forum for adaptation. On November twenty second, the general forum receives the presentation and considers. Adoption. So that's kind of the timeline for that. I, I have to say, I was pretty impressed with it. There was. Also that, okay, part of, part of the CAS is. Refuse contracts. And there, there was mention of ongoing issue of, of the transfer of refuse contracts to waste management. Residents complaints and staff will continue to monitor tho- those issues. And then as a matter of record, the S U N, the Solar United Neighbors. Co-op Center County Solar and EV Charger Co-op. Was launched at UHA Solar Installation on September ninth with the press release. And. As of tonight, I joined. So I'm now a member. And the more members there are, the more little. Presentations and, and online kind of guides to it and webinars that, that will be coming upcoming. What else? She will also, oh. She's, oh, there was a question about this. In fact, a. Friend of mine who's also a Ferguson Township resident. Asked if we're in, are, are, are we a part of the, this. Center County Solar Co-op. Because for some reason we're not listed in there. Did, did we get lost in the shuffle or?
I know, we started the whole ball rolling and now we're, where, where are we? So I, that's a good question, Pam. That was a great report. Dave, I think you had some, maybe some information for us about.
I just have a little tiny bit left. A little bit about, yeah, I don't think we need to talk about that. Part, to a part capital committee. And. Development and implementation of web-based survey of local business focusing on energy saving activities. And if you're interested, the next meeting of the CAS committee. Is October eleventh at twelve fifteen.
Thanks. Thank you. Well done. Dave, did you have some? I think, so I have just gotten my brain wrapped around the changes in the COG committee. And the differences in the, all the climate action committees. I think I just got my brain wrapped around that. And, and now there's the solar co-op, which I'm. Very enthusiastic about, but I could have swore that we already endorsed that through cog. We as in Ferguson Township. And then we were going to also endorse it separately as a township. That just hasn't happened yet. But I thought we already did pre-endorse it or something. Dave, can you? Help us understand where Ferguson Township stands in the solar co-op membership partners effort.
So I, I mean, as far as I know, the board hasn't joined the co-op yet. There, there may have been an endorsement of an initiative related to it. But it's planned for discussion on the October fourth agenda. Along with the presentation of the regional climate action report that Pam Adams presented to the. Cog committee. And also I've asked Brandy Robinson, who kind of, is not really a chair of our. Climate Action Committee. It's more of an ad hoc. Group that's advisory to the manager solely charged with putting together a. Strategy to meet our net zero greenhouse gas emissions reduction goal. But Brandy Robinson is, is really the one that's been most involved in that group. And I've asked her to present an update to the board on October fourth. On that, on that process, that initiative as well. So it'll be really kind of climate focused agenda on October fourth. With consideration of the, uh, joining the co-op and Ferguson Township joining the co-op. As well as a report, these, these two additional reports provided the regional local level.
Thank you, Dave. Thank you. And then I think, so I, I, I had a lot of confusion. So just. To maybe clarify if others have the same confusion too. I kept thinking that our Ferguson Township Climate Committee was akin to the Climate Action and Sustainability Committee of COG. But that is kind of incorrect. Because as you heard Dave say, our climate committee is just for the manager. It's not. It's not a committee for the board, really. Obviously, why am I making this distinction? Well, because. The tag is in the cog. The Technical Advisory Group of the Climate Action Committee and the staff is more akin to our climate committee here. So there's a lot going on and I just want everybody to try, like, be able to keep up with. All of these differences and kind of why does that matter is because, you know. That ad hoc committee that advises the manager. We don't have the same responsibilities of appointments and terms and that kind of stuff. Like we do, for example, in the Climate Action and Sustainability Committee in COG. So I was confused, very confused about that. And then something clicked for me today. I was saying to Dave in an email, he's probably said this to me like ten times already and it's just fine. Oh, click. Finally, I understand. So I just wanted to bring that during reports. So we can continue to educate ourselves and others on all the infrastructure, the structure that we're building to. Manage climate change here in the center region. Any other questions for Pam?
What is the name of, are, so we, so Ferguson also has a climate action committee?
Well, again, it's, it's, it's a little different than what you see at the region. It's, it's, it's the ad hoc climate. Something board. Is it Climate Action Board? I actually, it was formed in two twenty seventeen and I finally got all my confusion. And I did some research today, found it.
I noticed that somewhere and I was wondering why it was ad hoc.
Because they have a sole responsibility of developing, is it the greenhouse gas emissions inventory, Dave? Is that their sole? You, you probably can answer better.
Right. So the, the Climate Action Committee, and that's just a designation we've given ourselves. It is, was set up for a specific purpose. You'll find in the. Administrative code of the, of our code of ordinances. That there are different structures for committees that are all. that there are different structures for committees that are all advisory, either to the manager or to the Board of Supervisors, that may serve different purposes. So you might have standing committees, which, as Ms. Denny pointed out, those are much more structured, appointed by the board, defined terms, they're obligated under the Pennsylvania Sunshine Act to have public meetings advertised, et cetera. There are these ad hoc groups that are kind of convened for specific purpose. They may be convened by the Board of Supervisors, but most often, they're convened by staff who just needs additional counsel or perhaps technical advice, which I think is a good way to put it, on a specific issue. So in this case, this group was formed after the board enacted its resolution in twenty seventeen, committing the township to achieve net zero greenhouse gas emissions by twenty fifty. And then there were some other parameters that were attached to that resolution as well. And they, their specific focus is not just the inventory, which has already been completed, but to actually present and to develop and present this strategy through the manager to the Board of Supervisors. So that's been stalled for, for quite some time now. I mean, of course, there were the things that kind of put everything on the, on the fence for a while, but are on the shelf. But it's also been kind of affected by some of these other regional developments. And so I'm trying to keep this group focused on their task at hand. It includes Brandy Robinson, who also is involved in the Regional Commis- Committee. Uh, but also Tip Stama, who works for ClimeCo as an environmental consultant. Jason Gratini, who works for Infinitys, one of the principals in that firm. David Colmer, who's with the Sustainability Institute at Penn State. Megan Hoskins, who's with Ferguson Township School, or State College School District, but she hasn't really been involved much of late. And then com- typically, we may have Pam Adams there, somebody from the Regional Committee to kind of serve as that liaison or, or kind of keep us abreast of what's happening at the regional level. So I know there was more than your question, but maybe that just gives you the full lay of the land and what they're, they're being asked to do.
Very helpful.
So Pam, I think I finally have my brain wrapped around it well enough that if you want to talk about it, we can kind of like work out our confusion with each other too, if you want to get in touch with me, so.
So they don't actually have definite set meetings.
Correct. That's right.
Every other month or that, that it's.
Me- meetings are not open to the public, so they're specifically between the manager and the representatives of that.
As needed, kind of.
Right.
Kind of as needed then. Okay. Goodbye. I, I think I've got it now. Thank you.
Thanks for stepping in and serving, Pam. There's a lot there to understand before your feet even get to hit the ground, so. Thank you. Any other questions for Pam? Okay, great. Let's move on. So next up is the Public Safety Committee. I attended that. We had a pretty brief meeting. We did discuss our annual joint public safety D and P S and E Committee meeting, because, right, P S and E, uh, you know, there was some added complexity in this discussion, because P S and E is, is changing. But we're still having that joint meeting with P S and E, which is kind of part of Lucy Now, this combined committee. But those that are representing that will be invited, and we meet with, you know, folks from Penda and the, you know, electric service providers and talk about infrastructure issues and public safety. And then we had a fantastic report from Pam Adams on the Climate Change and Adaptation Plan, and just got to talk about it a little bit from the public safety perspective. So that was, that was nice. And that was pretty much the entire content of our meeting. We, of course, had our staff reports and, you know, learned, as we did from Dave earlier today, from Sean, in that case, just, you know, some information about rising COVID numbers and hospitalizations and whatnot, but nothing that Dave did not cover. So, any questions? Okay. Next up, we have the Human Resources Committee, and Patty, I believe that would have been you.
Yes, so the last meeting we had was actually a special meeting. And it was in response to the whole general forum motion that was made about COG mandating vaccines for their staff. And Eric and Becca came back with their findings and basically through their networks, human resources networks, et cetera, or labor organizations, they sort of wanted to continue to treat their staff the way they have been, they felt very strongly and passionately that they have been keeping COVID out of the COG workplace and doing a good job. And so basically, stay the course and continue to do what they were doing. And, and that's what they were sort of looking for guidance on, because the last time we had asked them to kind of look at the carrot and stick approach to the, um, the mandate, and they really wanted to wait for some of the federal issues to work themselves out and see how it starts to trickle down. They did talk about staff morale being, like, the mandate being demoralizing. And I, I'm embarrassed to tell you that I had to jump off early, so I don't know how too much of it ended. But I, the, as I, before I left, there was a lot of pushback from the Human Resources Committee saying, yes, you have done, they have done an amazing job keeping COVID out of the COG workplace. But I, I think they said that their best guess is that maybe about eighty percent of the COG staff had been vaccinated. And the Human Resources had pointed out that, uh, some of the committee members had pointed out that how could it really be that demoralizing to the staff if only twenty percent are not vaccinated? So basically, twenty percent are, you know, ruling, and wouldn't the eighty percent actually be demoralized by not having everyone vaccinated? So I'm not sure where that went. Hopefully, on our next meeting, I will get the follow-up to it. I know they were going to look into the possibility of maybe just giving a day off, whether you've already been vaccinated or you're going to get vaccinated. Everybody gets an automatic day off. They were gonna look into some of that. And they were also going to look into the issue of requiring now, moving forward, any new hires being vaccinated. We discussed briefly about residents and their ability to say to the COG, COG, COG people, like, you can't come into my house for, unless you're vaccinated. You know, if you have to come in to do an inspection, you know, how does that work if a homeowner wants somebody to be vaccinated? And then they talked briefly about maybe we could have, they could have a system whereby people volunteered their vaccination status, and that could help something like that. So it was a very good discussion. And, yeah, I just, that's about it. And if you have any questions, I can try my best to answer it, but I hopped off early.
Thanks so much, Patty. Uh, that does sound like a really interesting, in-depth discussion. Does anyone have any questions for Patty? Okay, it looks like no. And I am realizing that I did attend the Parks Capital and Authority Joint Meeting between the last time we met. And now that agenda is not in our agenda, but just to provide a very brief report. We, uh, one of our act- well, our only action item was the MG2V project and Muster Gap Greenway access question. So, uh, our last meeting, which we meet every two months, so it wasn't last month, but the one prior. Eric, the committee had moved to, to, yes, send a letter to Penn State requesting that we solidify public access between Whitehall Road Regional Park and the Muster Gap Greenway Trail. And so between that meeting and this recent meeting, Eric Bernier, the Vice Chair, and myself penned a letter, which we then put into the agenda. We got some very good feedback and made the, uh, those changes were adopted. And then that letter unanimously went forward to Executive Committee. And it's on our agenda for tomorrow for Executive Committee. I am a little fuzzy on the brand-new policy about who would send that letter if that letter is being sent. We have now a new COG policy on that. I don't know if it can come from Executive Committee or goes to General Forum, but I believe the intention is for it to go to General Forum before it goes out. It had some good support. I think the letter is pretty good, and Shreema's there at our meeting. She is a member of that committee. And she gave us some really good feedback, and I'm cautiously optimistic on the receipt of the letter. So I hope it does continue to move forward through COG. We talked about our November eleventh meeting date. We have to move it because of, it's budget time and a bunch of meetings are all moved around. So we're getting a doodle poll on that to, uh, to change our meeting time. So I don't have a next meeting date yet to let you know about, but I will. And we also had a brief discussion on the, uh, the comp plan and the proposal of the task force to look at governance. Uh, and that was about it. A good meeting, pretty much good meeting. If anybody else has any, if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Okay, looks like none. Next up, we have staff report, I'm sorry, other committee reports, and it's Pam Steckler with the Spring Creek Watershed Commission Report.
I'm doing the reports tonight.
Yeah.
This was, this was really good meeting too, I have to say. This was for the Spring Creek Watershed Commission on September fifteenth. It was recorded and it's on CNET. If I can send anybody the link if they're interested. Laura Fowler of Penn State Law School presented an educational topic that was, uh, understanding and stewarding water quality, a legal perspective. She spoke to the need to have regulations in place by twenty twenty five, particularly regarding total maximum daily load. And, uh, this was a part of the twenty fourteen Chesapeake Water Agreement. She mentioned the Kona Wingo Dam, that there are solids that are flowing over. And I guess they're, they've got to deal with that. The EPA could actually threaten to take over management of water quality if we can't get the job done. Regarding Phase Two and Phase Three of the watershed implementation plans, New York has amended their, their Phase Three. Pennsylvania hasn't. We need mechanisms for enforcement. Pennsylvania is actually the most flood-prone state, which I found hard to believe, but that's what she said. And we have the most impaired streams or stream segments. I didn't get a chance to ask her what percentage that might be, because we're a state full of streams, if you ever look at a map. But we're, we're lucky. We have them everywhere. She mentioned something that I thought was interesting. Regarding acid mine drainage, that there are rare earth minerals that can be found within them. And, you know, that could be pertinent to renewable energy. So the Chesapeake Water Agreement is something that has been really hard for local Pennsylvanians to, like, farmers and stuff, to, to really grasp. So basically, what she was saying was that we really need to focus on local, local county-wide action plans. And I thought this was a great slogan, kind of a signature slogan. Clean water, great for PA, good for the bay. Nice, huh? So, so it puts us first, but it's still lets there be that understanding that what we do affects the bay. I don't know if I have it in here, but somewhere along the line. Even though where I, where I wrote it, but I recall her saying that fifty percent of the water that goes into the bay actually comes from Pennsylvania, which is pretty remarkable. So again, we need to engage very locally. Uh, we have to maintain engagement. And then she talked about financing a little bit. If you have questions for her, she can be reached at LBASboyFSandFowler10@psu.edu. She's on the Chesapeake Advisory Committee. And she says we're not gonna meet the needs. We're, we're, we're behind here. We're playing catch-up because Phase Two essentially ignored action. So, so now we're kind of behind the eight ball. And, um, she feels we should involve Penn State as a land-grant college. And the watershed implementation plan is imperative. She mentioned the One Water Plan, and, and the timing of this is, is really good. Since, since we need to get up to, up to speed on taking care of what's going into the Chesapeake. In terms of funding, there's some federal infrastructure that could, that we can try for, uh, that there's a, a list of resources. Sierra Club Grant Program also might be a possibility. She mentioned that twenty-five percent of Pennsylvania's population counts on private wells, which is also another amazing factoid. And that we need to consider both water quality and quantity. Paul Takehak then presented the One Water Report. This is something that's been ongoing, and we're trying to get municipalities involved with this. Actually, out of twelve municipalities, we need seven, and we already have six. So that's pretty impressive, I think, in, in order to proceed to, to the next phase. Balfont Borough apparently has skepticism. After Nestle, they don't want outside regulation. So we gotta work on them some. What, what they're trying to explain to Balfont is that this commission is strictly advisory and not regulatory, that the state co- that this, this Spring Creek Watershed Coalition is municipal commission, does not have enforcement capabilities. And that's actually within the Articles of Agreement that were passed in two thousand and seven. So everything is strictly voluntary. So we, we gotta work on Balfont a little. Then Caitlin Hetty, I believe her name was, worked on the One Water Plant for her master's project. She's recording a presentation that will be presented at the November seventeenth meeting, uh, which is the next and last meeting for this year. And I think she talked about a toolkit to do stakeholder analysis. And this was a Penn State document. The Atlas Project Work Group. There's an education committee for twenty twenty-two. I'm trying to make this a little quicker. Gotta mention this one. Microplastic pollution in waterways in PA. Jasmine Fields, Sustainability Program Officer for State College, spoke about the, and, uh, the Penn Environment Research Study, which probably most of us have read about this already. I know it was in the newspaper. This is a pretty big deal. Fifty, it is a big deal. Fifty-three sites were studied off-surface water all one hundred percent contain microplastics. So this is gonna work into something else a little later. Oh, this is the um, currently EPA is not monitoring for microplastics. So I I guess the borough and I mean, from her standpoint, it was a borough. I guess everybody else is waiting for the EPA to give the word. I'm not sure about that one. She spoke about phasing out single-use plastics. I mentioned to her instead of taxing, she used the word taxing. I prefer the word fee for plastics, particularly since the municipality is not going to be gaining from this, so it's not really going into our coffers. I and I think people don't like to hear that, oh, they're taxing us on something else. So I I I hope she corrects that and um, Borough sent out a survey to restaurant owners to get feedback on plastic mitigation program and um, I think there's going to be public forum and and information sessions in twenty twenty two. The Climate Action and Sustainability Committee advocates state and federal producer responsibility laws. And I hope to be bringing up single-use plastics at a later time. Um, Dave Roberts spoke about PFAS. Oh, my gosh, I meant to look that up what that stands for. Do you all know what that is?
Bad stuff in the water. I know that.
They're forever chemicals.
Phthalate something. Yeah.
It's 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 a long word, but they're everywhere and right here, um, University Park Airport use firefighting phones. DEP, I think, is studying this. Wolf established a task force on this as well. Department of Defense is also, you know, guilty of of polluting with PFAS. It's a surfactant, I believe, and that's one of the reasons why it's so widespread. There are PFAS in our surface waters, seven creeks here. Have them and it's quite substantial in a couple of them. Um, we'll get more information in January on that. I believe Sierra Club sent letters to the governor and I think DEP. Um, so I'm glad that people are are working on PFAS. I think I'm done. I think that's the most important stuff, so we can get on to moving along.
Thank you, Pam. That was a great report. I looked up PFAS. It's per and polyfluoroacyl substances, if that helps any of us at all. And yeah, they're uh, persistent and they're widespread.
I hear the right up for me. Thanks, Laura.
Yeah, uh, any questions for Pam? Thank you, Pam, so much for your attendance and your really great uh, comprehensive report. Um, next up, staff reports. First up, Dave Prabakka, manager and actually representing the other reports as well.
Um, yeah, staff reports we keep in there. They're all written. If anyone has any questions, I can answer them.
I have one if nobody else has any. Dave, I noticed in Dave Modricar's report about the school crossing stop sign crosswalk item that there was a recommendation of the Township Engineer for Overhead Lighting. Uh, I was wondering um, why, why? And is that moving forward? And is that, do we have to run underground wires? And have we talked to the school district about whether they have lighting that would be appropriate and kind of I I just, I I didn't, I didn't realize there was lighting involved with this project and I just was wondering if you could uh, enlighten me a little bit more about that.
So Penn Dot Standards recommend all intersections that have crosswalks are illuminated, uh, which is sort of the genesis of that recommendation, but there's been no work done on it. Um, there are different options that the township can consider, including obligating the adjacent property owners to construct the lighting. Uh, but we can also do it as part of a capital project. We're kind of waiting for some of these other evolving pieces of this to gel a little bit more, including most importantly, the stop intersection study, uh, which may affect that as well. So I'm not suggesting we do anything with it just yet. But if we are going to be considering installing overhead lighting there, we'll want to look at all those options, whether the school district would participate in that. I don't know where the closest, I imagine it would would involve running some new conduit. And uh, at least one uh, control or um, pedestal uh, to accommodate the lighting and it could be expensive.
Okay, and so that would probably then come back to the board at some point for direction with that or, okay, super great, thanks. Uh, that was the only question I had. Any other questions? Okay, uh, any communications to the board? Patty?
Um, yeah, it sort of actually ties in with, I think, what you were just talking about. We I, we did just get an email today from one of the parents at Radio Park, following up on the um, the crosswalks and this traffic study that had been done there. Um, again, just basically more or less with questions about trimming back some of the um, the overgrowth, et cetera. And I I don't know whether some of that will just die off as the temperatures drop and leaves fall, but um, anyway, I I did want to follow up with Dave and Lisa to see if one of the three of us would respond and which one. But I also had a question then too about that because one of the things they mentioned was um, the stop sign, they said was back far. I don't know, I've never driven there. So um, but I didn't know what is required and would it have been covered in Ron Seibert's traffic study? Maybe drawing a line, you know, at some stop signs, there's a white line that gets drawn and but I guess we'll have to wait. Again, it's just something else, but that was the communication that we had. And I just wanted to check with Lisa and Dave about who was going to follow up.
Awesome.
So I mean, I I intend to to touch base. Well, I've already spoken with the ordinance officer. There's no violations that we're aware of that haven't been already addressed out there. Um, I'm going to go back and take a look at it again when I get a moment to this week, but I wanted to wait till I heard back from the ordinance officer before I got back to the resident who inquired. Um, the site distance at the intersection, there's methodologies to study that. Um, and as far as I know, and the township engineer has been out there quite a bit. There he hasn't raised any concerns or any issues. I don't know that he's done a site distance assessment specifically for that intersection, but I'm I just being familiar with it as I am out there. There there the uh, there are thresholds that sometimes people think are exceeded when they're not. So uh, it it may very well be compliant with that, what they call site triangle. So what that's what traffic engineers often refer to site distance. There needs to be a certain amount of clearance to allow for that optimal site triangle. It may very well be that that's the case, but when you're out there, it may not feel like it. There's nothing inherently wrong with having to stop at a stop sign and then having to creep out until you're able to determine whether it's safe to uh, go ahead or to to proceed.
The only thing I was going to add in is in um, the Public Works Director Report, it had noted that a work order was submitted to trim branches obstructing signs. Um, so maybe that would get at a little bit of what the resident had um, had been asking about. So um, you know, I'm happy to respond, Dave. You might have a more comprehensive answer for the resident, but um, we could all touch base uh, tomorrow, but I'm happy to respond to him with uh, what you said tonight, too. Please, so thanks, Patty. Thanks, Dave. Uh, I also had a few communications. Um, one was in opposition to the um, funding that we provided or voted to uh, provide for the incentivization for the airlines. Uh, one was asking if we're planning on doing a masking ordinance similar to the State College Borough masking ordinance. Um, one was actually concerned about the um, election audit citizen data request. Uh, very, very concerned about that and wondering if we're gonna uh, do anything to try to address that. And then I had a communication about um, the uh, Cecil Irvin Park next phase facilities, like just question about being involved in that and um, the process and that kind of stuff, which I you know, sent them information on how to stay involved in that process. And those were the only communications that I had. Any others? Okay, um, next up, calendar items. We have our plentiful municipal meetings listed here. Uh, we've got just our normal suspects, so nothing necessar, oh, I'm sorry. And then we've got a coffee and conversation coming up Saturday, October ninth, so uh, put it in your calendars for uh, Dunkin' Donuts, North Atherton, I believe, right, Dave? The North Atherton Dunkin' Donut, okay, uh, great. Um, so next item on the agenda is adjournment. Who would like to do the honor tonight of making the motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Fantastic. Thank you all. Have a good night. Thank you. Good night.
Good night.